Okay, we will move into the study session portion of the agenda. There are no speakers for the public forum, so we will move on to the purpose and agenda. Dr. Thomas?
Thank you Chair White, Board of Directors. Tonight, as all study sessions, we'll dive deep into a couple of key areas. We'll start off with several proclamations that we'll read with the board to recognize some of our employee groups, do a budget and staffing update, and within that budget conversation, have conversation around authorization thresholds with regards to purchase and leases, et cetera. Board, you all will engage in conversations around the development of an ad hoc negotiations committee and continue a discussion to get clarity around the curriculum audit. And the 200 series for the board is our work session agenda.
All right, thank you. We'll start with the proclamations. We do have four. I appreciate the administration's attempt to truncate them just a little bit, so we will continue with reading tonight. So the first proclamation is the celebration of Child Nutrition Staff Appreciation Week, National School Lunch Hero Day. If Director Johnson would read that proclamation.
Child Nutrition Staff Appreciation Week, National School Lunch Hero Day, April 28th through May 2nd, 2025. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes April 28th through May 2nd, 2025, as Child Nutrition Staff Appreciation Week. Our child nutrition staff are committed to supporting our children by providing nutritious, scratch-cooked meals to more than 8,600 students. This week, we celebrate our thanks and gratitude for these essential individuals. Whereas, the School Nutrition Association declares May 2nd, 2025, a School Lunch Hero Day to highlight the difference child nutrition staff make for every child who comes through the cafeteria. Whereas, Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' child nutrition staff serve approximately 1.2 million meals every year, averaging 6,000 meals each school day. Whereas, child nutrition staff are vital employees dedicated to preparing and distributing healthy and delicious meals directly to our students, all while providing a warm and welcoming environment. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to all Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' child nutrition staff for supporting the nutritional needs and success for our students, and declares April 28th through May 2nd, 2025, to be Child Nutrition Staff Appreciation Week in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
Director Malone?
Yes, thank you so much for that, Director Johnson. Our child nutrition staff truly are the heart of our schools, nourishing students not only with the nutritious meals that they serve, but also those caring connections. We just love the vantage points that we have because we get to see almost every student every day, even though it may just be for a little bit. We get to see them grow, sometimes for 12 or 13 years of their lives, and go through different likes and dislikes, and it's a really personal connection that we really value and love. Child nutrition staff, their work ensures that students are well-fed and ready to learn, making a difference way beyond the cafeteria. So, just really proud of my team and thank you for recognizing them tonight.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The next proclamation is National School Nurse Day. If Director Atkinson would read the proclamation.
Yes, thank you. National School Nurse Appreciation Week is May 5th through the 9th of 2025, whereas students are our future, and investing in their health today builds a stronger tomorrow. And whereas families deserve to know their children are safe and cared for at school. And whereas students face increasingly complex health needs requiring skilled support during the school day. And whereas school nurses have supported student health, safety, and academic success for over 120 years. And whereas they play a vital role in addressing both physical and mental health needs, coordinating care, and connecting families, schools, and healthcare providers. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Prior Lake Savage Area Schools proudly recognizes Wednesday, May 7th, 2025, as School Nurse Day. We celebrate the dedication of our health services staff and thank them for their ongoing commitment to student well-being today and every day.
Thank you for recognizing this team. Kate Kyle, our Health Services Coordinator, and along with her team of nurses at every building, see a multitude of kids each year, each day. So I know last year I told you how many office visits we have. It's 805 right now, is our average office visits across the district per day to our health offices. So, they definitely fill a vital role and need within our buildings, and on behalf of Kate and myself, we want to say thank you for recognizing that group and thank you to them.
Thank you.
And so you can stay right at the... I'll skip down to D, so you can stay there. And if Director Mason would read the proclamation regarding National Speech and Language Pathologist Appreciation Month.
Yes, National Speech and Language Pathologist Appreciation Month, May 2025. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes May as Speech and Language Pathologist Appreciation Month, honoring the vital work of these dedicated professionals. Whereas, May is nationally celebrated as Better Speech and Hearing Month, with May 18th, 2025 designated as Speech Language Pathologist Day. Whereas, speech language pathologists and teachers of the deaf hard hearing provide essential support to students with speech, language, and hearing needs. Whereas, the key members of our student support teams and valued partners to families and educators. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education expresses deep appreciation for the contributions of our speech and language pathologists and proudly proclaims May 2025 in their honor.
Thank you again. Speech pathology, or speech pathologists across the district sometimes go invisible and unrecognized, but we have 700 students who receive some form of speech services in our district. So, a shout-out to them. We have 17 speech pathologists that provide those services. And then also a shout-out to our deaf hard-of-hearing, since May is more than just speech pathologist. It's, what do they call it in there? No, I don't have it in front of me. But anyway, it's also a shout-out to their deaf hard-of-hearing teachers, and we have a 1.0 equivalent, but two deaf hard-of-hearing teachers that work in our district and provide those services as well. So, thank you to them and thank you for recognizing that crew as well.
All right, thank you. And our last proclamation is Teacher Appreciation Week. Vice Chair Bullion, would you read that proclamation?
Yes. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools proudly recognizes May 5th through 9th, 2025, as National Teacher Appreciation Week. Our teachers are vital to student success, and this week we honor their dedication and lasting impact. Whereas, May 6th, 2025, is National Teacher Appreciation Day, whereas teachers inspire, guide, and empower students every day, whereas they serve as mentors, motivators, and role models, whereas their influence lasts a lifetime and strengthens our democracy. Therefore, the Board of Education expresses its deep gratitude to all Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' teachers and officially declares May 5th through 9th, 2025, as Teacher Appreciation Week.
Thank you Vice Chair Bullion, and on behalf of all the administration and folks throughout the district, I can't thank our teachers enough for the tireless work that they do every single day in our classrooms. And I share this every year. Outside of parents, teachers have the greatest effect on learning of students, and actually it's collective efficacy. So not only them in their classrooms, but them together and collaborating do great things on behalf of our students every single day. So, just a huge shout-out and lots of love for our teachers throughout Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. Thank you for what you do.
All right, thank you. All right, moving down to Oversight of Operations. We have a 25-26 Budget and Enrollment Update. Director Frederickson?
Thank you Chair White. You have a document for kindergarten enrollment. I've updated that for you. As you can see, we are, as of April 24th, very close to where we were in 24-25. We're still about 19 kids short of where we would expect to be on October 1st, but we're back to where we were at the same time last year. So that is good news. We'll continue to hope that we'll get a few more over the summer, and that will be a very positive trend for us. Are there any questions about the kindergarten enrollment?
I just have one question. Of the total 496 enrolled, how many of those are open enrolled versus in district? Do you know off the top of your head?
I'd have to get that. I don't know off the top of my head how many kindergarteners there were.
I was just curious and if there was, you know, starting to think about potential building closures down the road, if there's any thoughts on, like, do we need to start thinking about limiting that now or eventually or down the road?
I will get that number to you.
Okay, thank you.
And then, the budget update. We have a Financial Advisory Committee meeting tomorrow morning. We are going to be presenting them with our updated revenue and expense projections, and there's some discussion that we're going to have around some uses of restricted fund balance. So, once we vet that with the Finance Advisory Committee meeting tomorrow, we will bring that to you on May 5th.
All right. Any questions around that? All right, thank you Director Frederickson. Moving on to a staffing update, Director Herman.
Thank you Chair White, members of the board. Dr. Thomas, just to provide a quick update for you all, May 1st and multiple of our contracts is a big date for our administrative assistance and our teacher's contract is the date that we provide our tentative assignments. So, our administrators did provide a tentative assignments to our certified staff on Friday, and we are sending out all of our calendars for administrative assistance for next year by the May 1st deadline as well. We will continue to look through our staffing as enrollments come in and we're making adjustments in all of our other contracts. They all just have a little bit slightly different timeframes than those two do, so just wanted to give a quick update that we are still moving forward with all of our staffing assignments for the upcoming school year.
Any questions or comments? All right, thank you. All right, moving down to a few of the requested study session topics. I believe this one goes back all the way to January, where it was requested that the board discuss potentially altering the $25,000 number for what's brought to the board for any amount exceeding for purchases. So, I can't remember. Director Atkinson, did you want this brought forward? Do you have any opening comments as to what maybe you want to talk about?
No, I think it was just looking at, sort of, based on what we learned last year about our budget process and perhaps where we fell short. Do we need to adjust this dollar amount, whether up or down or whatever it might be, on the purchase orders that exceed $25,000? And I think also, just like, looking back past this year, like, where is the... I'm seeing some inconsistencies about what is brought forth. Sometimes we see the teachers on-call, sometimes we don't. So just really understanding from a board standpoint, what is the expectation of what we will see on this purchase orders over $25,000? And then going back to the original request back in January, is this the correct dollar amount in order to allow us to be able to have transparency to these very large purchases so that we can have some visibility of, I don't know, trying to stay on budget or try to hit our budget requirements, so...
And I was... anybody else for us, anything? And I'm just wondering if, for a district our size, if that is, maybe I'd like administration's input on this, does that seem low, high, about where it should be? Could this be a tiered kind of approach where up to a certain dollar amount, somebody has authority? If it goes, you know, to another dollar amount, then it would require Dr. Thomas's... Okay, I'm just spitballing here and wondering what your thoughts on that might be there? Michael or Tammy?
Chair White, Board of Directors. I would say, I understand and I can appreciate the inquiry for the authorization limits. I would say that there are a lot of purchases made on a weekly, monthly basis, and anything below 25,000, I honestly, I would get concerned with our ability to meet frequently enough to get a turnaround time to pay these bills on time because there's tons that come through. And so I hear kind of two things, Director Atkinson. The threshold conversation versus letting, like, what's showing up consistently on the ledger or whatever? And I don't know if they're mutually exclusive to you or if they are somehow enmeshed. Because I think there have been some times where questions as to why something didn't show up on the $25,000 and over. One, there were two different purchase orders, like distinctly separate purchase orders, even though it was with a same larger company, they were for different services. And then one, there was an oversight on our end that we owned, and we rectified that at the next board meeting. I don't think we have a pattern of not having the items that are 25,000 and up on that ledger. And where, like I said, where we have, we've taken care of that and remedied that to ensure that there's a check, better check, internal check system. Dropping it below 25, I will say this is fairly low, just generally speaking, with public entities of our size and scope. That's a very low dollar threshold. I think, and then if you look at other aspects like our capital, $25,000 will go out the door in capital quicker than we can bat our eyes. And so, I would say for some of our capital projects, to, again, I've seen capital thresholds much higher. So to your point, Chair White, if you were tiering something like this, for me, I would see it as tiering for academics and tiering for operations or capital, because capital has larger, bigger contracts. $25,000 is, you know, you usually don't touch even replacing doors, you know, in a building or windows or glazing and things of that nature for that price. So, that's my wondering. Director Frederickson, if there's anything else you want to add to that that I might have missed in terms of...
Yeah, if I can just add, for the capital projects, a lot of those are on our LTFM, which this board has to approve anyway, so they're already kind of on there. There are some, to Director Atkinson, your point of sometimes they're on there, sometimes they're not. For things like teachers on-call, I never used to put them on there because it's just kind of a given, and then I got questions on why they weren't on there, so then I started adding them, and then I got questions why they were. So, I can go either way. Teachers on-call, we kind of, as we build the budget, there's some bigger items that we always talk about that we don't have control over. Teachers on-call, utilities, transportation, some of the insurance, some of those things we don't have control over and we're just going to have to pay. So, for those items, or I think another one was the lease on MinCaps. That one, once the contract gets approved, then we're going to get monthly bills. Phone bills are the same way. So, I can certainly go either way, that this board prefers to have everything on there that's over $25,000. We can certainly add it. If you want to exclude those things that, like, are going to be monthly invoices that are probably going to be over $25,000 every month, then I can exclude them. So, but I just haven't gotten a consistent message from this board on which way you want it to go.
Can I just add, sorry, Director Atkinson, one more thing maybe you just add to kind of turn it back for comments. Similar to this too, some of our products that we buy, like supplies, we might have an open PO, so we know we're going to be buying paper all year long. And we might buy, you know, $25,000 worth, we might buy $10,000 worth, we might buy $30,000, but the PO of the, you know, let's just, you know, for an easy number, it's $100,000 for paper, whatever that supply might be. And we'll add, you know, purchases against that PO that's approved by the board already for the entire year. So, if that's something that you want to see when the primary PO has already been approved, and then everything charged against that PO, or do you want to see just the PO? So I think something like that too would be another point of clarity of what the board...
And that's kind of what I'm wondering. I mean, I'm sure we have a lot of POs that are in excess of $25,000 that we may pay over time, and I want to try to stay away from approving something for $100,000 and maybe making three $33,000 payments and have to have that almost like double look that we've already approved it. The fact that our payment might be over that limit, I don't think warrants it being brought separately to the board now. If we have a PO for $100,000 and all of a sudden we find out it's going to be 100 and a quarter, that's the kind of information I'd like brought back to the board. But I'd like to honor the definition of PO and make sure that, once we approve it, it doesn't come back unless we're going to go over for some reason. And that's kind of where I'm getting, whatever the number is, if it's 25, 35, 50, that's really kind of where I was going with this.
Yeah, and I think getting a consistent understanding of, sometimes we see split POs. So, is it one PO even though you issued two payments, but it's the same invoice number? Because then often, I've seen them where there's two payments of 20 or 20,000, and they're the same invoice number, but there's two checks, you know, so...
Between two different buildings, two different accounts.
Yeah, so I guess just...
That's typical.
Yeah, but where's the consistency there? And honestly, all it does is really add transparency for our community and for our board when we're putting these purchase orders above 25,000 on a register, right? And it's happening before they actually get paid. That's the other thing. It has to happen before they get paid.
So then I wonder...
Well, that's the... See, the thing is, is that by just going through the expense transactions, look for anything over 25,000, not all of them are POs. Obviously, our utility bills go over that, so, you know, the idea behind that was for the concept that we do bidding, approval, all that kind of stuff. Most districts don't have that low. I know the state doesn't require that, as I had already mentioned in a previous conversation. So, and they don't do that for several reasons. One, the cost of the process of approval, putting things out to bid or whatever, actually causes a negative result on the actual efficiency and cost of the overall project. So, I would actually be in favor of actually going back to the original definition of what a real first-time purchase order is, not a recurring one, not a recurring payment, and actually raise it to 50,000 where actually the state and most other state-funded taxpayer is, because I think that's going to be a little bit more indicative of where a larger spend is, but not have it be, I mean, our bus bill is over that, so that would not be a separate PO item. And also, the POs are going to be by individual UFRS account grouping code, right? So if you had a PO for, let's say, Glendale and another one for Hamilton Ridge, those would be two separate POs because they go against two separate accounts. So, and that's, you know, and if we want to look at the aggregate, that would be a board decision. If we don't, we look at it the other way around. But, again, per what Dr. Thomas just said, our annual printer is way above that, just for the printing services, not even including the paper. So, we need to figure out where we want to prioritize our time. But as far as transparency, everything's in the transaction report anyways, and a lot of these things, by the time they're put on that separate group, have already been paid. Services have already been received, so it's not like the board is actually making a decision on them either when they're showing up in the consent agenda.
Can I get clarification? I thought the whole point of this project or this report was that they go on there before they are paid, correct?
Correct.
Correct, so that's not correct, Director France, so...
No, actually it is because the problem is, is that people have asked for things to be pulled that are not in the original definition, and that is where we've kind of gone above and beyond.
And that's where I'm getting at. I think we need to concentrate on that, on making sure we take action once on a PO.
Right.
And if it happens to be well above whatever threshold we decide we want to land at, that it doesn't come back when portions of it are paid. That's kind of what I'm getting at. And, I mean, I'd have no problem raising it, you know, with the, would that require board action to officially raise that, or if we decide to go that direction, or is this a thumbs up we can give, or a...
Well, the thing is, is that the definition of it has changed. So like, when we did the, paid the insurance, I mean, everyone pays, everybody does personal and business in increments, right? Every six months or every so many months, et cetera. That got pulled back several times because of the confusion of we approved the original PO for it, but then the numbers in the actual transaction report got larger. So, but that wasn't the intent of the 25,000 PO threshold. We've actually now started going beyond what the original threshold was and including other things in there. So like the speaker insurance bill, we pulled, that got pulled out several times because it was confusing. We already approved the PO, but then an amount in the transaction for the second half of that showed up, and they wanted that pulled out too.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, so the original, so we have the intent, which was already low to begin with, of 25,000 for the aggregated one or above, and then we started pulling a lot more into it. So, what we probably need to do if we want to keep with that threshold is actually create a more discrete definition, particularly for the public and policy, of what that actually entails, or take that 25,000 and raise it to be more of the standard with other districts, cities, councils, anything that uses taxpayer money.
Director France, there are a lot of districts that our size that have this dollar amount, so please don't, I mean, I've done my homework on this, and there are districts, our dollar amount is on par, so I think that's why the conversation is here tonight.
So, would there be any desire to raise it with that understanding that we are going to do our due diligence to try to only approve POs once and then...
I mean, in all fairness, Director White, we have not done a great job of hitting our budget. In fact, our district has not hit our budget. I can't even tell you when we've hit our budget. And so that's kind of the main reason this came to the board table, is like, do we need more oversight on this so that we can bring a balanced budget and hit a balanced budget for our community? I think if we are a district who is consistently, if our expenses were meeting, or, you know, on par with our revenue, and we didn't have a situation where we had to go consistently ask to dip into fund balance, I don't think that we'd be having this conversation. So I do not support raising it. I think defining it is really important, but I do not surprise, until we can get our budget balanced, I do not support raising it.
I'd like to actually challenge, what is the relationship with the $25,000 limit for the, or above, for a PO approval and the increase in transportation and sped costs that we experienced last year? I don't believe there was a relationship between the board approving one thing or the other. We approved the transportation contract, and we had some surprise expenses that were explained, and we also had sped costs that we are completely out of control with, which were then balanced in credits with the balance sheet. So, extra revenue coming in, not as much, but those were out of our control for the most part, and we are trying to bring what we can in the transportation back. So I'm not seeing the nexus between the PO limit and the budget.
Yeah, I did give the board a reconciliation of the differences for the revenue and expenses. We did get additional revenue to offset some of those additional expenses. We did still dip into fund balance, and as I explained in the reconciliation, we had gone over on our transportation for all of the reasons we talked about. We had additional special ed expenses for all of the reasons we talked about. So, there certainly are going to be expenses that come up that we didn't anticipate. We try to do our best. And again, this year, as I've said, we're going to be very close to what we budgeted, and hopefully next year, we're going to have an accurate budget revenue and expense projection. So...
I want to make sure we kind of stick to what we're, I mean, is there any, is there any will here to change anything regarding this? If not, we'll move on and get to the other things on the agenda. This was just an item that was requested, brought up for discussion. If the will of the board is to leave it alone, and that's fine, I just...
I would just like to understand, like, the intent of this obviously is to try to identify any maybe unplanned expenses, right, and have board authority for approval. So, you know, is there any written process or procedure around tiered limits on approvals by the administration, as well as, you know, maybe we write some procedure that any repetitive payments in nature don't need to be included? So things like transportation and teachers on-call, like, that's pretty typical, where it's really just, you know, we want to identify the non-repetitive maybe things that...
The outlier?
Yes, exactly. And that's where, you know, I think, the amount, whatever it is, just really trying to identify as a board, like, these are not typical things, or maybe outliers of requests for things that we didn't plan, right?
So then...
So maybe if there's like definition of what this is, or...
So is this better handled policy-wise, or do we just kind of understand moving forward that when it comes to this 25,000, we're... that when it comes to this twenty-five thousand, we're really are, really are talking about things that are outside of the scope of a budget that we've approved? Is that, am I going too far there, or?
That's the way it used to be, and then I think, and correct me, I don't know exactly when, but they never used to be listed individually for anything that was just over twenty-five thousand. It was only for those big-ticket items, which is the typical, and of course, the state statute, the, the threshold is, I believe, fifty thousand to, and then it's discretionary, and then anything over a hundred and seventy-five thousand now. So that's, that's where a lot of districts our size are.
We've always added this report in the last year. It had never been done before, so it was, came as a request. I can say that when this board approves the budget, so departments are gonna get their allocation, and it is up to the department to decide how they're gonna spend that allocation. So the assumption is, when this board approves a budget, that the allocations go out. For instance, if we give an X amount, and say a million dollars to the IT department, it's up to the IT department to manage how they spend that budget. And if there is something that's over twenty-five thousand, it, they're going to do that. They just need to manage within that budget.
I think that, that to me is kinda my concern. So do the departments have the authority to just decide what they're gonna spend the money? And how do we ensure who's approving larger expenditures that are, to ensure that they are aligned with our strategic plan and focused on academics and the things that that department has to deliver, right? So are there controls in place by administration to, you know, after whatever threshold of amount, given their budget, that, you know, you're ensuring they're spending it on the right thing?
And that scenario.
Right.
You have a million dollars in IT, then something comes up and they have to spend four hundred grand. Does that need to be, is there, does that just happen, or do they come to you and say, listen?
So, yeah, no, no. So, when, when we have, just kinda a real case scenario, we, we are working through the transition of getting rid of very old and very insecure desktops right now, okay? And we're going to have to procure additional devices to take the place of those. Marcus and his team is not doing that in isolation. We have had a variety of senior leadership meetings, talking about various scenarios that will, one, will eventually be coming to the board, you know, for a recommendation, because it's a sizable purchase. So, but then, you know, there are times where Martha's gonna go out and buy, you know, a dozen reams of paper. That's not something that we're gonna come back to the board with. And so, there's, there's, you know, we, we have an established background of obviousness of practice in, in every organization I've been in to this point. If every department gets allocated, you know, their, their resources. And where we have found certain departments, based upon some environmental or external factors, are challenged to do that, that's where we've had public conversations with the board to say, we're gonna be over budget with utilities, or gas prices, or whatever it might be. And this is what we had fixed, and we do try to move resources around to balance. This is what we're doing right now to bring, you know, this year is down to a close, to where we might have surplus to offset anything that might have been an overage. But that's the nimbleness of budgeting. This is, I mean, as a governing body, you approve an aggregate budget. And outside of the aggregate, if, if money comes to the board and it's above that budget, there's, it's never been done in secrecy. It's never been done without sharing, here's the reasons, here's what's contributing to it, and here's our request. You know, like, we don't have that authority to do that. We do have authority on a daily to.
Can I, there's, with regards to like the example, we are, because we're using taxpayer-funded dollars, tax monies, there is a requirement too, if it really isn't four hundred thousand, we have to go to bid after a certain right. Yeah, they have to go out for an RFP, yeah.
But let's just say it's a forty thousand dollar security patch, you know, that Marcus, and again, I'm probably out of my league, you can correct me if wrong, but a security patch for all of our iPads in, in the district, okay? That's not something that, if it's within his budget, that's not something that he's coming to the board every single two weeks to say, can I spend this, can I spend this? Like I said, you'd be in board meetings every week, multiple times a week, to keep up with the pace of purchases that are happening all throughout the school year. And so that's why I was trying to get clarity on the issue here. So I don't know, I, I appreciate the, the clarity of making sure that folks understand how money's being spent. I, I don't question that at all. I don't see the connection to the threshold. I, I think those are two different issues. So, so that's why I wanted to just better understand today in this discussion, cause I think we will always want to make sure how we're spending our money is done so, you know, with integrity. It's public resources. Again, even with fund balance, we've never used anything that this board hasn't approved.
Oh, can, I'm sorry, Director Thomas, when I'm reading the description here, it's, it's interesting, cause it says, the description under what we're talking about tonight.
This is the verbatim of what was said that during the board meeting.
Oh, okay. Cause it just says in here, it says, provided that any transaction in an amount exceeding the minimum amount for which bids are required.
Yeah, I think, Martha, correct me if I'm wrong, you were just paraphrasing what was said from that January board meeting?
Oh, I thought that was, well, it's what's written into the January board meeting, correct? So the question is, is, so is it just for what bid, which bids are required? Cause that would make sense. If we're going out and we're bidding something and it's over twenty-five thousand dollars, it would make sense that that would then come to the board for review and approval. Not just every single.
Right, if we're doing a bidding process for something.
So then it kinda makes sense, the way it is. Maybe just the way we're doing it on the backside is not making sense.
We are lower than state statute. Anything over twenty, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, we're required to do an RFP. Anything, the, actually, the CFR, the Code of Federal Regulations Number Two Hundred, states that the recipient may self-certify a threshold up to fifty thousand dollars on an annual basis and maintain documentation to be available. They also require anything over fifty thousand to have two quotes, which we also follow up with all of the departments to make sure that if they're putting in a purchase order, that they do in fact have two quotes. And we follow up on that quite frequently this year.
That's federal, yeah. So state is a little different, states, states actually, the state of Minnesota for our tax levy funding, cause I looked it up today, cause I have, my company, I'm involved in MSAs with the state, so they repeat it on every single one, they're like that thick, that it's fifty thousand, and, and they will, except for a minute, they literally come back and say, if you wanna go out for a bid or whatever, and anything less than fifty thousand, it's not even cost efficient, so, yeah.
So then where do we land here? What's, what's the comfort level of the board to increase that to that fifty thousand? With the understanding that, if I'm hearing you guys right, that with those purchases over that, that requires an RFP that we would then be made privy to, or have to vote on?
We have to vote on, yeah.
Would that kinda meet in the middle, or, or, you know what I'm saying?
I mean, honestly, if we were hitting our budget, I'd be fine moving it to that, and I think we could work towards that. But we're not, in my opinion, we're not there. And I think that the way I read this, keeping it just to the, the bids that are required versus just putting every single, like, the bus stuff, all the recurring stuff, we don't need to be, have on there. The teachers on call, we don't need to have on there, because those are reoccurring costs. I think it's the one-offs, and I, if I think about back to some of the one-offs that have been on here, where we've actually, as a board, there's been scenarios where we haven't approved them, and we haven't moved forward with, I think of one scenario that I remember. So, I would, I think, now that I understand what the intent of this is, I think the intention of it being a bid and it being like not the everyday charges, and keeping it at twenty-five thousand dollars is where I'm comfortable at.
Does anybody have a problem with that? All right.
Can I just, that's not reoccurring POs, and that's PO by account, right? Just to make sure we're clear, cause I don't.
Right.
Okay.
All right.
Do we need to update the language in here eventually, maybe, but?
I think, yeah, so the annual org meeting, maybe we'll just reflect. Chair White, board, maybe, I just wanna make sure we walk away with a shared understanding of the conditions of satisfaction. So here's, here's what I'm gonna offer. I, I, we, I will work with Tammy to kind of write up this discussion on where we've landed, more like a procedural kind of language. That way, I can share it back and verify, does, does this capture it? So that we can then carry that into the org language, and then replace that moving forward.
That sounds good.
All right.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is discussions surrounding whether or not the, the board is interested in moving forward with developing an ad hoc committee for purposes of the upcoming certified negotiations. I've spoken with most of you, I think, at least briefly about this. And just wondering what the appetite is for this possibility moving forward, for this negotiation cycle? Kinda where I'm, I'm envisioning this, if, if there is an appetite for this, if there's an appetite for this, I would go ahead and appoint two or three members that would take this on between now and next Monday, the fifth. Take those, those three members, maybe Tammy and, and Dr. Thomas and, and Director Herman as well. Kinda set the ground rules, how are we gonna be involved? What aren't we gonna do? What are we gonna do? And lay that out very specifically, so that we'll, we know exactly what the board's role would be and would not be, and then bring that back on the fifth to say, this what we came up with, sound good? And, and go from there. So that's kinda what I'm, so step one is, is there an appetite to move forward with, with developing this committee for this negotiation cycle?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
And this is a question to administration as, as well as the bargaining units. Honestly, would we get in the way? I guess is the way I would like to put it. I know that Vice Chair Bullion and I were privileged to sit through one of these last year. It was quite impressive, but also the, the ground rules are pretty clear, and plus, we are not qualified contract negotiators. Does it help? Does it hurt? Does it expedite the situation? Does it make it worse? I mean, what, what are your thoughts on this?
I know that's a loaded question, but it's gotta be asked, I feel, so.
Director France, members of the board, I think there's pros and cons to everything. I think in the past, when we've had negotiation subcommittees that we were able to share regular updates with, bounce ideas off with throughout the course of time before bringing to a closed session, it helped us inform what would be helpful to bring to closed session, and when to come to closed session, extra set of, you know, thought partners around that, and keeping them updated on a more regular basis. It does add additional step to negotiations, for sure. I think the main piece of it that, that has some potential roadblocks or concerns, in my opinion, is that everybody involved on all sides of the table and throughout the committee, or community, sorry, know that that, that committee cannot change the parameters of negotiations. And I think sometimes that's very difficult when there are board representatives present, or even if they're not even present, but there's a subcommittee of them that a pressure and/or assumption is made that that committee can make those changes, and they cannot. So, I think as long as that's very clear, that helps with it. But that, that potential that individuals may feel like if that committee does come to the table, or they're present, or they're available during negotiations, that they can even change any of the parameters, would still be present, and that would be a concern of mine that we'd have to navigate through. But again, I think everything in life comes with pros and cons, so that would just be some things that I would ask the board to take into consideration.
Well, that was my question exactly, since we don't, obviously, we can't, if, if, you know, in the positions that we had before, we were observing, more or less, and during the negotiations, and currently, we can't speak for the board, that only happens in a quorum. And it was, you know, fun to watch, in a weird sort of way. And, just wondering, and, and also, another, another guiderail would be, when? Is it at every step? I mean, and I would be looking to you all, as well as the bargaining unit, to kind of give their feedback on comfort level, use, you know, whatever. And also knowing a lot of these are going to be somewhat confidential. It's not like we can just go off and give our opinion and talk to other board members and stuff. It would only have to occur during a closed session, et cetera. So, again, like the pros and cons, that's, that's where, that's where my opinion sits. I don't wanna be a road, I wouldn't want the board to be a roadblock in any of this.
Director France, members of the board, I don't feel comfortable speaking on behalf of the union on what their thoughts are around that. I am happy to reach out to their lead negotiators to start that conversation. We were supposed to meet today for our opening session, but decided to, to cancel because of the threatening weather. But I can reach out to them and get that feedback from them, cause I don't wanna speak on, on behalf of them.
Vice Chair Bullion, you got a comment?
Um, yeah. I'm curious, okay, let me see how, if I can. When I think about, I'm open for the will of the board. If the board wants to have an ad hoc negotiation committee, I'm open, I'm open to that. When I think about what my experience was with Director France last year, it was asked by the union that there was board representation. And we did have the privilege of sitting with the negoti, the district team. It was a privilege to sit through that. We didn't, we, we didn't participate in any portion up until the very end when we were all together, when there was a agreement made. Wasn't that, was that correct?
We only, yeah, we only basically said thank you.
Right, thank you for, so, again, so I am open to the will of the board, if the, if the will of the board is that we have an ad hoc committee for negotiations. And I would also like to understand, to piggyback on what you said, Director France, is, it was asked by the union leadership for that, and when we were there, we, we, we weren't really invited to participate. And, and I know we can't participate, so excuse me for using wrong language, but I want, I wanna say that the ad hoc committee between the, if that is where, what the board decides. The board involvement, along with the district involvement, along with the union involvement, it is a collaboration to come to an agreement. I am, I, I'm, I just wanna encourage that we have that set from the beginning, that it's not where it's any kind of us and them, and we're all working together to come to an agreement. And I want there to be, I wanna understand from the beginning, like, is this something that the union is requesting? It seems to be, it's the, the union bargaining with the district, right? And so adding in the board ad hoc committee, I just want the, I want to respect the time of the board, the time, cause it's also fluctuating, how do you set that? So, that being said, again, my, my desire is obviously to do what the will of the board wants as far as an ad hoc committee, but I do appreciate the questions that you ask. Does this hurt? And I, and I appreciate also you saying, Director Herman, that there's pros and cons to everything, and we don't want to hinder us coming to agreement. We wanna help it.
Right.
Vice Chair France, I, I do, again, I don't wanna speak on behalf of the union, and we're happy to, to get their feedback. And I do, I do just wanna say, I think.
And I do, I do just want to say, I think from the past, I think that was a little bit unique, because that came in at the very end, when we were in mediation, different than starting from the beginning.
That's kind of what I was going to, too.
And so in the past, when we have, at least here, from my limited experience here, when we've had a negotiations committee, it had been from the get-go and they were, provided regular updates. And then it was, and then the, the bigger updates and any potential conversations about need for maybe changes or anything like that, that came to a closed session from there. I think one thing that we have heard in the past from the union that may be helpful moving forward, I don't know if this is how they currently feel, is just the, the contract is between the union and the board. We are the representatives of the board at the table. And I think sometimes there's that desire to take, or to have that ability to talk directly to a representation of the board, so that there's not a telephone, maybe, situation. And then sometimes that's not the desire. So again, I would just, I would just ask for an opportunity for us to hear directly from them, so we're not speaking on their behalf. But we can always work with a negotiations committee, as we've done in the past. And again, there's pros and cons to all of it.
Director Johnson?
Director Herman, don't feel, if you don't know the answer, so please don't. Right. I, I got to sit through the, the MSBA negotiations training, a month or, maybe it was longer than that. And just with, with PELRA and doing, doing it that way, or, or speaking about that, we could have every one of us on the, the negotiations team. And then that would force every single one of our negotiations to be public, according to MSBA. Or we could have three people and then it would be, right? And then it could be like any other committee, right? Not, not videotaped or anything else. It would ultimately be how we chose to do it. It, it's, it's, it's up to us, how, how we chose to do it, which I think is the right thing. And I appreciate you saying it is a contract between the union and the board, right? Which, which is important. So I'm fully on board with, with setting up a committee like this.
Now, we, just to be clear here, making all the, so first of all, a committee would not be able to really negotiate with the, the union, any union, any bargaining unit, because they wouldn't be able to speak on behalf of the board. So it would be more of an observational role.
That's, that's under, that's understanding that, because we're not in a quorum, that, yes, we do not speak on behalf of the board, because we're not in a quorum.
But there hasn't been a willingness, and I know that last year, or last time, two years ago, two, one year ago, yeah, because that one went on for a while. The, there, you know, we have, if you want it to go smoothly, you really want to have both parties involved in understanding how this goes. Because the, the negotiations also start off different. They start off with priorities on each side. The board sets the budget, the overall budgetary limit. And then they start to whittle down on each side, you know, what they want to be added or subtracted to the contract and stuff like that. And there isn't always a willingness on both sides, on the administration and the, and the union side, to make that public, particularly in the beginning. So that's why we have to actually, even though it's our decision, we could make things worse by not actually asking, right now, the administration to go and reach out to the bargaining units and get their desire too. Because the purpose of this is to actually build those bridges, not burn them down, literally. And so that's, that's why I want to be sensitive about this.
Director Olsted, you had your hand up?
I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. I remember last year, or last cycle, I guess I should say, last year, that like, as you said, Director Herman, this, our, our, the board members' attendance during mediation was a request from the union at the time, correct? By their request, okay. So I think that what I'm struggling with, and a couple of points that have been made already, and I, I can't speak for anybody's day job, of course, but I know I'm not a professional negotiator when it comes to this. I realize that we wouldn't be actively, at least, we'd have to determine this, actively negotiating, and it would be more of an observation kind of feel, or role. To your point, Director Herman, I would like to hear from the union to see if the union has an appetite for this. I think generally speaking, it might be same leadership, but I'm not sure on that. So I, I would like to hear from this. And what does the word committee mean? Does this mean just board members or others? So I think we need to flush that out. Who makes the call? How are these folks chosen, or appointed, or whatever word you want to use? Would this be for all contracts or just PLSDA? This feels rushed to me, at least right now. I'm not saying I'm opposed or for it necessarily, but it just, right now feels rushed. And I, I feel like we'd want something in writing to really hammer out, A, what the unions, or unions, multiple unions' appetite would be. I know at, last year at this time, there was an appetite for it. Doesn't necessarily mean there is now. I think it kind of changes the, the feel in the room sometimes. I remember Dr. Thomas, you saying last year, too, I hope I'm not getting into anything closed, changing the, the, changing the room, you know, or the feel of the room, depending on who's in it. And you certainly wouldn't want to jeopardize that either. So I feel like this needs a little bit more discussion and maybe some flushing out and something in writing, so that everybody's kind of, you know, will of the board in writing. But making a decision tonight for next week feels a bit rushed, to me.
Director Mason?
Yeah. I was just going to say, I had the pleasure of attending the Southwest Metro meeting and had a closed session on labor negotiations. It was enlightening, and I would highly recommend that we do that as a board, to discuss just overall strategy and how we want to approach labor negotiations. I think.
That happens next week.
That happens, yes.
So then, does it make more sense to discuss, make the decision?
Pros and cons.
We'll have some time to maybe get some feedback from the union and then re, readdress this at the closed meeting next Monday, is that, makes sense?
Oh, next, okay. That's what you're talking about.
Maybe extend the conversation. Director Jackson?
Yeah, can I add some context? What, when we talk about negotiations ad hoc committee, this is very common. It's very common with other districts. It's very common to have the three board members working with administration. And really what it does is it brings together, like you said, a very collaborative approach between the union and the board. And the, the board is not there to negotiate, they're there to have a presence and really to be able to bring back the message to the full board, just like in any other committee that we do. We as board members aren't out there making decisions or dictating what's being said in these other committees. We're there more to attend and report back to the full board. And so it's very common, and where I know that boards have done this, it works very well. So I fully support it. And, yeah. And I would say, two to three. And as far as how many contracts, I think we could start with the one, the big contract, and see how it goes. I mean, what we've done in the past, there's been some big hiccups. And I think we as a board just want to do better and see how we can create a more collaborative relationship with the union throughout this process, so that it, it, it isn't as rocky as last time.
So would it be, I'm sorry, anybody?
I was just going to finish, like, I think in that closed session, determining how many members we want, you know, if everyone can think about before then and maybe come prepared. And then, you know, there is training out there, if we want those people to attend training.
I was just going to say, do we chew on it for a week, or?
Yeah, we can't do that in a closed session, just so you know legally, we can't make those decisions in the closed session. But we can come up with a way to do it. And again, we've gone backwards and forwards historically in this district, as you are well aware. Yeah. There's just, the guardrails need to be up, especially with, people haven't been involved in negotiations before, that sort of thing. So we got to be careful. And again, I would very much appreciate the feedback from the bargaining units on this, because I know that it went the other way because of other things. And last time was a unique circumstance.
Understood.
Because of the biennium, the funding, the confusion with the funding, and a lot of other things. So last year was not normal.
So if we ultimately made the decision, let's say on May 19th, would that, would that be a, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Just, can someone explain why we can't make that decision? Because I.
Because I don't think we can, we can't take the, we can't take any action to, to make up a committee with, in a closed session.
Not, I guess maybe it's not a defined committee anymore, it was how we're approaching the strategy to negotiate.
Which we will do on Monday.
That is, and that's in the closed session, but we can't, as a board, make any decisions within a closed session.
My question is, if, if we don't, if we make the decision on the 19th, will you have really even met in any substantial way yet? And, you know, it's a guess, but.
Chair White, we were scheduled to start negotiations today. We were hoping to reschedule that next week, looking at different schedules from there, how fast we negotiate is, is slow at the end of the school year. We typically go pretty fast in the summer. But again, I can, I'm hearing it's the will of the board that we get feedback from the union. I can also encourage them to email you directly with that feedback. And then we should have a better understanding during closed session, to at least have that conversation, understand that can't be a vote there potentially for creating a committee. But that, that conversation can be at closed session to move from there.
The, we will have that feedback, and that, not, the entire meeting isn't closed. We do have a.
Yeah, we can do it outside of the closed session.
Maybe we decide before we go into closed session whether or not we're going to do this. So would it make sense to get that feedback? We can chew on it for a week, and then we'll come back at the regular portion of the next meeting and make a decision?
I have a question, and this is a procedural question that you may want to call and ask about. It, once we get the feedback and we discuss strategy in the closed session, which is normally what we do, and the board gives, you know, direction, can't vote, but give direction, based upon that feedback, could we come out into another topic area, or is that not allowed? And I know, I, I've never seen it done here, in the times that I witnessed the board meetings before I got on the board, but I don't know what the cadence is afterward.
So you're saying you would, you know, have, have the regular business meeting, you close for negotiation strategy session, reopen the meeting.
Which we do anyways.
And then in that reopening, you would have a, you would have an agenda topic, an, an action agenda topic. So I guess what I'm wondering, and Martha, we can talk about this too, if you think that that might be the case, you may want to put that on the agenda following the closed session, so that it's noticed, because you wouldn't have time to notice the community.
Right.
So I would just say, put it on the agenda ahead of time.
You can always pull it.
And then you can always pull it or something, but that way it's there, give the board the flexibility.
Yeah, and again, I've never seen it done, but I don't know if it's not possible.
Do we have to define the timeframe of how long you're going to be in that closed session? Because then we all have to come back for that. So we do it. We have to.
So let us work through some of that understanding of.
And I understand what you're saying, and I'm just wondering if we can't just do it at the, at the open, or the regular part of the meeting ahead of the closed session, at least either agree to or not to have the committee.
I think you could, yeah.
I just didn't know what that was.
Maybe, so maybe put it on the agenda at the regular part of the meeting.
We, yeah, we'll, we'll talk about that tomorrow when we amend the agenda.
All right. You ready, couple? Director Olsted?
Okay. I, I still think that this is very rushed for next week.
Well, it's not, it's two weeks, actually, isn't it?
No, it's next week.
We have a meeting next week.
Oh, that's right, because we have the spring break.
Members of the board.
Request, I, I'd like to request that we get something in writing about what we can do in an open and closed meeting before I'm comfortable.
Well, if we do it beforehand and we're okay with that, that's fine. But I was wondering if, if we wanted the feedback during the closed meeting and discuss the strategy and then come out. Either way, I just didn't know what was appropriate. And also, I don't, I personally, I don't want to keep anybody here at like 10, 11 o'clock at night either, have them come back in.
Right.
Members of the board, I do, to Director Olsted's point, I, I can't promise when we'll get feedback back either. I want to respect their potential need to meet with their team.
Understood.
To have a bigger conversation. But I will reach out to ask for that connection point and keep Chair White updated as I, I hear back from them on any anticipated timelines of when they can get their feedback back to us.
Thank you.
Question? I'm sorry, Director Johnson.
White, I mean, we are going through open and closed meetings this evening as part of our 200 series. I mean, I just glanced over it and it doesn't say anything about that we cannot do that.
Well, take action at a closed meeting.
Afterwards.
Oh, afterwards, yes.
Correct.
But I'm, again, we're just trying to be sensitive to everybody having.
Understandable with that.
Yeah, understand we can do it, we're just trying to be a little sensitive to people's lives.
Yes, absolutely.
All right. So I guess I would encourage everybody just to kick it around, you know, this, for this week, and we will come back to it on Monday.
Chair White, just because of what Director Herman just mentioned in terms of making the offer discussion, by the time it comes in, should I hold until Friday? Just let, you know, like, go later than Friday to add this agenda? Is the board okay with that? Okay, all right.
And that's, it'd be a similar situation, if we had it on there and we didn't get the information, we can always pull it.
If you don't get the information, then we can, okay. All right.
Everybody good?
Yep.
All right, thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is the discussion surrounding a curriculum audit. I thought to start this, because Dr. Thomas has been through a full-fledged version of this in another district, if maybe it'd be helpful for him to give us maybe a couple of definitions of what it could mean, depending on, on how we would move forward with it.
Yes, well, I, I think would also be helpful to understand what the ask is, or what the, you know, the, the outcome. But generally speaking, when you go through a curriculum audit, it's a very comprehensive process that takes a good four or five months. There's big companies that do this, very similar to what Director Fredrickson goes through on, on the financial side. It's a, it's a curricular dive, just like we would do in an audit, a financial audit. And they can cost upwards of $50,000, $60,000, depending on the scope of the project and, you know, what you're looking in, size of, of all your curriculum and instruction, et cetera. So that's, that's a very traditional audit, objective, third-party person coming in, checking for materials aligned to state standards, reviewing lesson plans, looking at unit assessments, you know, the whole barrage of, of what's in your CNI division. And then based upon that, generating a report to say, here's where you have gaps, here's where you have strong alignment, here's where we would recommend that you, you know, augment an adoption cycle, or it's good, you know, all of that, okay? So that's that. You have, you could also do a curriculum review. I shared with Chair White a review cycle that I have put together. And it's more of a higher flyover of checking for curriculum aligned to state standards and resources. So you're basically cataloging what you have in your CNI division. And that obviously is something that can be managed internally. But again, we're, you know, we're a pretty lean district, so how, timing and all that, you know, where we would do that, we could certainly discuss that. And then I would just share with the board, and those of you who have been here through this, every time you adopt a curriculum, you essentially go through an audit. So let's just use REDACT, that was, that's going to be the next big one in our state, that we're going to have probably statewide comprehensive ELA curriculum adoptions happening, or realignments, et cetera. So, you know, when we have to, when the REDACT passes and standards emerge, et cetera, curriculum, you know, guides, what needs to be covered, we now, now will have to go through and review all of what we've got in our ELA curriculum and look at the core curriculum. And look at, um, the core curriculum, as well as are there supplemental materials that we've purchased to fill gaps in the past? Do they still align, not align? And, um, this is part of what, uh, Dr. Edwards was alluding to, um, because this is also something that we would then be taking through teaching and learning. To say, okay, here are the new standards, here are some of the resources that we're gonna start considering. Get perspective from, from, you know, various committees, et cetera. And then come back ultimately to make a recommendation to the board to make a purchase of a comprehensive ELA curriculum. So you're gonna build in the curriculum audit, if you will. I'll, I'll just say curriculum review, cuz an audit is truly a third-person entity coming in and doing that. So, um, a review is probably more common that's done. And you do them in cycles that naturally occur, or you could kind of do a cataloging on your own, if you will. Which is something that we started to do with elementary, which I believe we did that two, a year ago, two years ago with elementary. And I know our team now is working through the cataloging of our resources and beginning in, um, various content areas in secondary. And again, just kinda going by subject, so. Give us the board a little context of, um, on the academic side, what does that mean, what does that look like in a variety of different scenarios? And then my ask is, you know, the intent of the conversation, um, being brought forward, what's the outcome? And then that might help me better understand what the ask of the board is, of what you're trying to gain from that.
Can I ask a couple clarifying things that you shared, Dr. Thomas? If you could elaborate a little bit on the cataloging, what that actually looks like? And then you mentioned CNI division, what is that?
So, uh, sorry. Teaching, learning, curriculum instruction. We call it a lot, CIES. So, uh, the, the cataloging basically saying, for, um, our geometry course. What, what textbook are we using, what resources do we have, what materials do we have? That, that's the cataloging process I'm talking about.
I just needed a mental picture.
And I think when I first brought this up, um, this was being done in some other districts. And I think the main driving factor in the back of my mind is we have a new strategic plan. And the number one pillar, one of our priorities, is that students receive rigorous, challenging and relevant instruction for the, their unique learning needs and goals. And so in my mind, um, it's, it's a twofold thing. It's making sure that we're going, we're going through, okay, what is, what does our science curriculum look like? From elementary to middle to high school, does it align with standards? Are we before standards, are we after standards, cuz I've heard some things, feedback, for, you know, like.
We're behind, cuz standards are gonna be emerging, new, new science.
Yeah, so that's where I'm as a board member, I'm totally confused on that, okay? And then, um, and so, you know, what are we using? How does it align from all levels of, you know, elementary to middle school to high school? And then also adding it to our website for transparency for our community, because other districts have all their curriculum on their website. And so, to me, that's what I understand, um, even school boards for academic excellence, they mentioned that John Hopkins, I believe it was, that they do that, that audit. It's about fifty thousand dollars, right? But that's not what I was referring to or even asking for.
Audit, I, I.
Sorry about that. So, I think it's knowing that we have this, we have a new strategic plan. And how do our, our resources align with the plan, making sure that it's challenging and rigorous and relevant? And then adding that trans, and does it, how does it align with standards? And then adding that transparency to our, um, website for our community is, in my mind, what I was thinking about, so.
Yeah, so I would say, um, I, I would liken that to more of a curriculum review. And I think, um, that is something that we did with our elementary beginning, and I think that's been uploaded to the websites. Element, and elementary department, or the, uh, teaching and learning department, I believe, on the elementary, uh, page. Do you wanna speak a little bit about some of the.
Yeah, um, we begun the work of, of that, some of which hasn't, much of which has not yet. And so we would, through that process that was described, um, and we are beginning that work in various content areas. We certainly have that work in regard to math, uh, in that we have done a comprehensive audit, if you will. Or curriculum review, to use the terminology, and we've adopted, um, a K eight now, uh, curriculum. Again, uh, we are in that work with our social studies curriculum, for example. And we're beginning to identify those resources that are currently, uh, the, the dates and, and how long they've been in place. So definitely have working documents that we have not yet uploaded. But certainly getting some additional input and direction here, uh, with what the will of the board is with regard to that. Is certainly something that we're very much open to.
Yeah, so I, I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, it was, any? Director Johnson?
I think your high over flyover example that you, that one, the review. I think that was a, a great thing, and then what Director Atkinson's reference with the strategic plan is, is on point. Exactly what I was thinking when, um, I read it. And then, I, I understand that adding it, everything to the website is gonna be extremely time-intensive, all of those types of things. But maybe, all of our schools have an open house, but putting all of our curriculum on display. Should suffice for, for the time, so that we're not, you know, being budget-friendly, right? And maybe focus on these upcoming.
The natural. The natural cycle.
Right, that you're attempting to push through, right? So that we have an open and transparent of, this is the new things that we're looking at, right? Before they're even implemented, this is what we're looking at, right? And a simple link, right, so that, so that we can begin this process. Right, of the community to see it, because those aren't things that people are gonna be able to see, feel and touch.
And that.
But they're gonna be able to at least start to dig into.
Right.
That process. I think maybe allocating a little bit of time into that part instead of uploading everything. So we can kind of, especially with, with summer coming up, right, all those types of things. That might be something that could be able to be planned, um, with an open house, rather than trying to push to get everything uploaded. You know, before the end of the summer.
Director Franz?
You know, um, one of the, I know that COVID kinda threw things a little bit awry. But one of the things we used to do is, like with these curriculum reviews, just put the cadence of the reviews on a timeline on the website. So they know that, like, for the next two years, you're gonna be doing social studies, we just got done with math. We've got the read thing going on, so people can see it and they know who to contact for questions too. I think that that may help, uh, the community understand that whole cadence of review, that we do no matter what. And we've done consistently, we're just not maybe communicating it as well, which hence maybe have led to the confusion. But, you know, every district does this. I don't know if you're, no, can, you know, can see what you're gonna do three or four years from now, but just letting people know that, hey, this is coming in. And obviously the standards are constantly being reviewed and have a certain time limit update. A minimum of once every ten years, they completely overhaul, so that way people can see that we're keeping up with it, or at least attempting to.
Yeah, I, I agree, I mean, I, I think it would be super helpful to have some sort of documentation or matrix of, you know, catalog, whatever we wanna call it. To identify the curriculum being used at every level and what year it was implemented, when the standards are changing, or just, you know, some sort of, you know. So we can understand as board members, like, how long have things been out there, what, you know, parents could click on it, the link to whatever curriculum we are using. And then also, so that we know, you know, what's upcoming every year, you know, okay, standards are changing for social studies, we need to relook at it next year, whatever that is.
Yeah, we, we have actually, uh, this is good feedback, and I think to Dr. Edwards' point. So we actually have an internal document of our curriculum review cycle. That's, and I believe Dr. Zombush might have actually shared this, um, once with the board in a work session at some point. If you recall, there's these linear lines that overlap and kind of when we could expect to see results and all that kinda stuff. So we have that document internally, it's not something that's published, you know, so we could certainly make it more, um, average, public-friendly. Um, and, and I think that's the other thing right now, um, I think I shared something with Chair White the other day too. And just, uh, a template that I have put together for how we sequence all of our curriculum with, um, dates, publishers. Which standards are, are they hitting, cuz we might have, um, core curriculum, but then we might have two supplemental curriculums, because no curriculum is perfect, so you have to fill gaps. So you'll have some of those, um, additional resources, but are tied directly to the core curriculum. So yeah, we, we do have that, um, and I think, uh, a review cycle. I think starting with that document, I think that Dr. Zombush mentioned, that might be where we begin. But to a couple of your points, yes, when we do school open houses, it's an opportunity for, uh, teachers to share. You know, as a third grader coming in, this is what you can expect over the course of the year, okay? And, and I think that's something that we can build towards for the fall, and then kind of make that transition into a digital upload to everything as we work through. I will say our, our next opportunity to do this, as Dr. Edwards mentioned, is with social studies and ELA. Science, well, well, I don't, I'll just say social studies is probably still spinning too. So, so ELA is probably gonna be the one I can really say with confidence, that will be the next kind of statewide implementation of new curriculum. Cuz everything's gonna change as a result of, um, when they land that in the legislature, so. That will be our big focus area, but in the meantime, I think we can work on building out some of these other aspects to have it face forward more. Helps me understand that you're not looking for a very traditional audit, cuz that was.
No fifty thousand dollar.
It kinda goes back to our strategic plan, there, the message was loud and clear from our community, that they wanna ensure that students are receiving challenging and rigorous instructions. And if for some reason we're finding that it's not, then it needs, we need to come to the board and decide, how do we supplement it or whatever? So, that's really.
As a parent, you know, as we, everything, especially middle school, is on an iPad, right? So we don't have like a book at home where I could just like page through whatever, social studies and kinda see what they're learning the year, like, there's just not, it's a different world, right? So as a parent.
Yep.
I think the feedback you hear is like, I have no idea what my kids are learning, you're like, to be able to see that or have links to it is super helpful.
Chair White, I, I did wanna, um, mention too, in a couple of the curriculum reviews since sitting, um, in this chair. I know that we did, just for the public's knowledge too, we did have the curriculum, either what we were looking at and compare and contrast. We did have it, you know, in the district office, that people could come in. Invited people to come and like, to your point, Director Mason, like, hold it in your hand, like, flip through it and things like that.
Never came back.
Yeah. Right, yes, I did hear that. Not a whole lot of people took advantage of that opportunity, I will say that with the two that, um, I've known about since sitting in this chair. But on the other side of it, the math night that we held, you know, very well attended, you know? So, I mean, it just kinda depends, but we do have, usually when we're, especially if it's like, okay, we're looking at these two. You know, we put both out in there, um, and not a whole lot of people take advantage of that.
And that's where I would jump in, I appreciate you bringing that up, and I think the comment, uh, or the perspective and feedback around. Maybe they're not going to come and see it, uh, here, but they're gonna come and see it potentially at open house. Or we're gonna present it on the website in a more, uh, user-friendly way. I think a great point, uh, Director Mason, around links, so like, if this is the curriculum, I can go, uh, peruse that particular resource. So I think those are all good, uh, feedback that help inform, uh, our next steps on this work.
You clear?
Yeah, and I think as we get ready, you know, in June, we'll have like an academic, um, session with the board. And I think we'll bring some proposals to the board at that time, to share kind of what we think would be plausible to move forward with. If that, if that is okay with the board, if it's timely with the topic.
Thank you very much, appreciate the discussion. Why don't we take, uh, quick five again, and let everybody that wants to leave, leave, and then we'll dive in. Okay, uh, everyone, um, I wanna be respectful of people's, a couple of board members have an early morning, as well as Dr. Thomas. With a finance committee meeting, so I'm gonna propose, uh, that we do our best to try to get through as much as we can by ten. And, uh, with the goal of trying to get through two oh, see if we can get through two oh three and, um, and go from there. So let's dive in and. And see how efficient we can be. So first on the agenda would be, uh, policy two oh three. The operation, operation of the school board, Director Johnson, if you wanna make a, maybe an opening comment?
Yes, so what we have here is, uh, policy two oh three, so we have, so for just purposes, right? We took out the Prior Lake current policy two oh three and struck it out. And then this is just a normal two oh three. The only thing that has changed in here is we have put in the latest edition of Robert's Rules with that.
All right, any opening comments, Director Franz?
So we don't follow Robert's Rules revised edition, they're only for boards twelve or greater or parliaments. We follow, and that was in the old one, we follow the Robert's Rule for small boards, uh, which is taught by the MSBA. And that's a, that's a huge distinction, because there's a lot of things in that Robert's Rule revised edition. That will never apply here, uh, we can't do it.
So you're saying that twelfth edition is the revised edition, is that what you're?
It is, it's a, it's a, well, usually they go, are, are, are Robert's Rules revised? But yeah, the latest edition or any addition, we only follow the MSBA small boards.
So would crossing out that red part there suffice, or?
We can change that to, instead of twelfth edition, we can say Robert's Rules of Order, latest edition for small boards.
Well, actually, they don't have, Robert's Rules itself doesn't create a small boards division. You, we, we use the MSBA, which was in the original operating norms. And it was specifically pulled out because of the issues with, well, you know, you're supposed to do a motion this way or that way or whatever, and we don't. So we, you know, when you went through your phase one and phase two, you went through the, the Robert's Rules training. Uh, and you got a PowerPoint presentation probably out of it, or a download that you could have downloaded. Those are the steps and the motions and stuff like that, and they also have something online. And that's what we normally follow, um, and then a lot of states and different areas have their own version. What the school, MSBA also says is that, um, regardless of what happens, because we're independent school boards. We have to do certain things by motion, but the rest of it is actually determined by whatever rules we put in there. So they, they also say that in the actual MSBA training. And it's, and it's kind of important to point that out, because otherwise people pick up the book and kinda cherry pick stuff out of it. And they'll say, well, the board didn't follow this or didn't follow that, and obviously we don't pay a hundred and something thousand dollars for a parliamentarian. And we don't do all of that either, which is required.
So then, so then what, should I just say Robert's Rules of Order?
Yeah, I do think so, because there are a lot of things that we maybe don't do, that we should be following in Robert's Rules of Order. And at the end of the day, um, there's not much difference between the, the big board. I mean, yes, there's big difference between the big board and the small board, but it's really, there's not that much difference. And if we follow Robert's Rules of Order, we follow Robert's Rules of Order, I mean, that's, it's that simple, you know what I mean?
And, and this is, this is MSBA's policy that they had. The only thing that was changed was I put in the latest edition of Robert's Rules. So we can cha, so we can keep latest edition, or we can, just the, the words, latest edition? Or we could put in twelfth edition or whatever.
The actual book is like this thick, that's why.
Yes.
So.
Yep.
Either we follow MSBA, or we say which parts of Robert's Rules we're actually gonna follow. Because otherwise you get into, and we have had this happen, where people go, well, you didn't do this, and this is a motion, and you should've done this, it this way. And you, you know, it's a big book. So if we're gonna have guidelines, either we use the MSBA, or we say which version it is. Because otherwise you will, and we have ended up in this whirling dervish of which one applies and how to apply it.
Should C read, how, how does, how does MSBA get filtered into this? Should C not read Robert's Rules of Order, should it read MSBA?
We actually stated in the last norms that we follow the MSBA's rules for small boards.
Can you please point that out, cuz I didn't see that in here anywhere on our old policy.
Yes, it was a small board. Yes, it was a small boards on the policy.
What number is it, please?
I don't know, it's all crossed out. Hold on, let me see if I can find it.
I think there, when you say, Robert's Rules of Order, it's, there is, Robert's Rules of Order has been created since the 1940s or something.
Before that.
And it exists in order to...
It was British parliamentary, so, yeah.
19, whatever. I don't know the right names or years. But the point is, is it's really helped, it helps to keep meetings running smoothly. And it also protects the voice of the minority, to be honest with you. The rules are the rules. And so you cannot cherry pick and say, well, we're going to use this part of it, and that part of it. And so you either use it, or you don't. And I think that's why we do use it in business meetings, and we don't use it in study sessions.
Okay. And that's the other thing that needs to be... In the crossed out version, okay, let me get to where we are. It's under number five, no, no, sorry, what's number six? It's 6.10. Board members shall be conducted according to Minnesota statute where applicable, and then by Robert's Rules of Order for small boards, as prescribed by the Minnesota School Board Association, using the authority normally vested in the board chair, as described in Robert's Rules of Order. So, is the, would it be sufficient to take the language of 610, and put that in C? I'm fine with that.
I agree.
I mean, it pretty much says, we use Robert's Rules of Order, so I'm fine with that.
Okay. So 610 will, from PLSAS policy 203, okay.
And the only other thing I had was, because there is a distinction between our regular meetings and our study sessions, under three, Rules of Order, should say, Rules of Order for regular school board meetings be as follows?
Yes, that was my other comment.
That way, we can still kind of do whatever we want to do in the study sessions. It can be a little more loosey-goosey.
Yep, we'll add regular.
And if there's other places that I didn't catch, that, where it says, Rules for school board meetings, if we could insert it, I'll keep looking. But I found that one for sure, and I think I found another one, but...
There was another one that I...
Also, on page 50, there was another one. So it'd be three Rules of Order, and then just insert regular after word four.
Got it. We will make that change.
Okay. Anything else on 20, I was, I'm sorry, I was on to 203.1. So anything else on 203? Good? Yep, now 203.1. Noted that one change. Is there any discussion on 203.1?
Does MSBA really say to raise our hand?
No. That was my suggestion. And I kind of like...
I'm not a fan.
There is a, where was it, where in MSBA, they actually have where they stand up?
So MSBA's struck language, it says, school board members need not rise to gain the recognition of the chair.
Right. And so I suggested that in order to be respectful, and that we're not talking over each other as board members, that if we get the attention of the board chair by a hand, he will then direct the meeting to make sure that the board member is addressed.
No, I like that.
Again, regular board meetings, for the most part, the conversation's a little more loose at study sessions.
Yeah, and B, C, and D also follow the small business things in the Rules of Order on 203.1 as well, so... So it needs to be, anything need to be changed? No, it's the minimum. I think that, you know, the older policies were a result of experience and things happening, and then having to be defined, and having, you know, where policies were confusing, or whatever, and then the boards went back, and we made things more discreet. And we're going to start from scratch again, so that's kind of what this looks like. Was there anything specifically that you would like, that's more prescriptive, put back in? Well, I mean, there's a lot of things in here that went through years of discussion because of circumstances and all that. And some of those, we had taken ethics, a lot of the stuff out of ethics, and put it into the rules, norms, because they weren't really the definition of ethics. Which is more or less, you know, loosely stated, like, you know, being nice, moral, respectful, stuff like that. And instead moved more discreet things in here, into the norms, because they were really rules. And so then, as we had experiences of things happening, they become, they became more prescriptive over time. Like the open meeting law, you know, the rules in there to allow, for instance, Martha to be able to inform people of when it's okay to like, go to things in which there's a quorum, and leave it up to her, because she has the expertise, and knows what she's signing us up for, versus things that we have to make sure we don't have a quorum in, because board business will be discussed, that sort of thing. And then like, some of the other circumstances under that. So that was put in more prescriptively here, to transfer that authority to our pseudo-parliamentarian, to help the board make those decisions. So that was done. And then, and then we made other things, like, a little bit more prescriptive as far as showing up to meetings. So, and I did make a comment, and the comments that I sent back to everybody, about meeting attendance and quorums, because we cannot meet here and be on record, or whatever, if we don't have a quorum, we would literally have to cancel the meeting. And the default language in here did not say that, that was put back in. But that also requires, for public notice, that requires adequate notice to the chair that you won't make it. And during flu season, believe it or not, that is huge. And during inclement weather. So we made it a little bit more prescriptive to say, within, you know, as soon as you know, you have to notify the chair that you won't be at a meeting, instead of just saying, you know, we were getting messages at two minutes before the meeting, going, I'm showing up, I'm not showing up, that sort of thing. And that's not, that's not really being respectful, not only that, to the public that shows up to a study session, or to a...
Well, I think, I think...
So that's why we got really prescriptive in here. So that came, that's the reason why the norms got so large. And that's up to you guys. I mean, that's up to the will of the board of putting that back in there. I hear, I hear what you're saying, and I think if I could understand what letter, if there's something, you know, that we had in our old, kind of similar to what we did, just, you know, bringing back 6.10 to C. Like, if I could understand, you know, what exactly you're saying for what letter, I'm listening, and I understand what you're saying, but I'm not, I can't grasp what you're suggesting to put back in. Well, so, when you guys went through the original policy, did you look at what you wanted to remove? Or did you just go to the MSBA template and put that in here? I don't know what your process was. Okay.
Yes, so my process was, look through all of MSBA, find, right, have Prior Lake side by side, make sure that we had something, right, in MSBA that matched, right, something in Prior Lake. If it didn't, we needed to put it in there.
Yeah, so, like, if something was similar in MSBA, that was some, you know, the wording might have been a little bit different, but like...
As long as it matched the intent.
Diligent about making sure what, if there was something that Prior Lake had that MSBA didn't, then it was brought over. But otherwise, it was, the MSBA model was adopted, if it, if there was something connected with the, does that make sense? If there was something that connected, we were going with the MSBA model policy, rather than Prior Lake.
And that was the will of the board, right?
MSBA is a template that you fill in, particularly because no statute is going, except for the open meeting law, is going to do rules and norms. That is the board kind of managing itself. So it's, so like I said, the original one was done, over the years added to, because of experiences and how this, the boards in previous wanted to operate. So if there's things in there that you didn't like, or didn't think were appropriate, then you take them out, or whatever your policy was. But you, as long as the board is remembering that a lot of our policy numbers were created before MSBA came up with a model policy for something, and sometimes we were, as you can see in a lot of the other numbers, we conflict, because they came up with one to fill a gap, and we had already used that for something else, and that was procedural, statutory, student-led, or whatever. So doing that one-on-one has never really worked. And actually, the policy committee talked about that quite a bit, of why we're off on numbers. So, but that's, you guys, whatever you did here, that's why I'm asking, what was your process? So when we, I'll just say this, and please add whatever. When we received from the will of the board that we wanted to adopt MSBA model policy, specifically if we're on 203 right now, Prior Lake's 203 was extremely long. And I understand that it is based on years and years of morphing, maybe, whatever, where do you want, you know, of work put into it. MSBA's model policy has, it's split out into understandable chunks, 203, 203.1, you know? And I think it's, because it was the will of the board to adopt that MSBA model policy, I appreciate that for 203 specifically, because it allows...
It's digestible.
It's digest, yeah. It's in chunks that you can, it's an organ, better organize, organizing. Yeah, thank you. So that's what we did. I get it. After being on the board for so long, like, whenever something would happen, and we'd say, we'd call the MSBA, and they'd say, well, don't you, didn't you write that in your policy? And we'd be like, no, well, we only gave you a template. You need to do that for yourself, and then you need to govern yourself in the 200s. So that I remember from the very first year that I was here, so. And I'm not sure, Dan, if you experienced that in your history, of them coming back and say, well, it's your policy, we're not going to tell you how to do this, we're going to set the basic guidelines. So that's why we're having this conversation. But the little things like the note, the board may choose to include the policy, a method of calling the roll. Again, my feedback was, we already have that in our agenda, so we chose to do it by putting in our agenda items, we do a roll call, right? So that's why I put in my notes that, just take that whole section out, because that's how we decided previously, and by the way, you already have that in there. So putting those little notes in there, yeah. We pressed it out, yeah.
Chair White?
Yes.
I just have one thing under J. It's, so 203.1J, it says, the order in which names will be called for roll call votes will be determined by the school board, and isn't it typically by the chair? So I would just change that to by the board chair.
Okay.
Yeah, because that's, because you're running the meeting, it falls under that. So that's the only change I had regarding this policy.
Chair White, can I, letter G, there was some comments on letter G from multiple board members, and if I can point out, specifically with the phrase, "any member of the audience."
I pointed that out, too.
We can either take that out, if everyone is okay with that, and Director Bullion and I can work that, if everyone is okay with that, or we can basically work that into the phrase of, hey, it's going to be the administration.
Yeah.
However, whatever everyone is okay with.
And I think...
I would just take the whole sentence out, and leave it, "Members of the public who wish to be heard shall follow school board procedures." Because we already recognize administration in another sub-part of the policy.
I was going to say, either, either scratch it, or somehow, we do this through the open forum. So either, I don't care which way you want to go, if you want to just leave it out, we're not going to get rid of the open forum, or somehow tie this sentence to, it's going to be through the open forum, that this recognition is going to take place, we're not just going to be willy-nilly calling on people in the audience.
During open forum. The last sentence, take it out and leave it in the open forum and agenda section, because it's going to be complex.
Maybe that, we do have an open forum and agenda section in the policies, maybe just scratch G, if everybody's comfortable.
Scratch G, and add, no.
No.
Do we have that?
We don't need to.
Statement elsewhere, because I, so it's, like, if the way I was reading it, was like, the school board shall have the authority to, I would reword it, like, recognize administration in the audience regarding a request to be heard. But I guess this is specific to the public, is which we're talking about.
Right. And since we have a policy on open forum, maybe that covers it.
That covers it, okay.
So we're just going to scratch G?
I was trying to understand what they were saying.
Change the lettering, got it?
And then to Director Franz's earlier point about, maybe it's surrounding letter M, you're right, we wouldn't meet. I think this is written, like, for a night for tonight. Severe weather here, so there's two people here. It basically, basically, the little bit of research I did today, you know, the two people can call the meeting to order, and then adjourn, which then would allow us to meet the next day, as opposed to posting for three days for a special meeting. It's a very unheard of, and probably ultra-rare occurrence, but it is covering something that I suppose could happen, but I've never...
We would go to statute for that.
And that's what I'm wondering, if statute covers that?
It does.
It does. So if it does, what's...
Statute, statute does, it is, it is verbatim from statute.
This letter M, so, is, and the statute is referenced.
It is referenced, so we can choose to leave it?
Well, if it's, then I have no problem with it, I just want to make sure that...
Here's the thing, is the language that, so, it's somewhat verbatim from statute. There's other parts of that statute that, and we ran into this, I believe, Martha, one time, where we didn't know if we were going to be able to, I'm not sure if it was inclement weather, or something else, where we said, well, what do we do if we've got to call the meeting? And then I believe we had to call MSBA and ask them, you know, how much notice do you need, if it's under this circumstance, or whatever? I can't, I think, maybe it was a snowstorm? Three days. Yeah, and that was the question that we had, is do we, can we delay for three days? Because I think there was a deadline of something we're supposed to vote on. And so the statute, you actually have to go to the legislative version of the statute, where they had to deal with this in the legislature, about their timing of voting, and that's what we got. So technically, though, if a public reads this, it makes it look like we still meet. And technically, I don't believe we can even have a valid motion, according to...
We can, with, and again, this is so super rare. This is literally not us cancelling a meeting, or not cancelling, it's more, a couple of people showed up, no one else could get there, what do we do?
Right.
Which would then allow, this just allows the two members to call the meeting to order, adjourn, and allow us to avoid the three-day meeting. To your point, if there's something that's time-sensitive, we could meet the next day.
Well, and that's where we had, that's where it wasn't written in statute, I believe. And they had to go through a legislative interpretation, and blah, 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 blah. It was, yeah, I would prefer if M, actually, we just, we have the statutes in here, and the statute that this references is in there. I would prefer just to take it out, just because typically, what we would do is put a notice of saying the meeting's canceled, and not even do the call and adjourn. And that's what I believe we were given permission to do, if, but it didn't occur.
Yeah, and it's so incredibly rare, that I don't, I can go either way.
Director White, it also is really Robert's Rules of Order, because if you had four of us here, and one of us got sick and had to leave, then you still do need to adjourn, right? And that's really what this is, this is also talking about.
Another scenario, that would allow us to meet, start the meeting again the next day, as opposed to having to...
Right, so it's really, but it follows Robert's Rules of Order, so if we follow Robert's Rules, why do we need it in here?
So, is it the will of the board to cross M out? You know what, I would prefer to do that, because it's kind of confusing. And I believe, no, we did. We had a snowstorm one day, where on the day of the meeting, we did cancel in 2017 or 18. I think we were all here, though, and then we left. No, no, we weren't here, because I got, I was landing on a plane when I got... No, I, no, we weren't here because I got, I was landing on a plane when I got the text message an hour before the meeting saying, don't show up.
I, I, if, if statute covers this.
Yeah.
And it's never going to happen anyway, we can probably cross it out.
And it's, yeah.
To avoid confusion. So does anybody have a problem with scratching letter M?
No.
Okay. Uh, one last thing, I think, before we're done with this, is anyone opposed to removing the notes?
No, I won't, no, please.
That's fine.
Slash away, just to make sure that we're good with everything.
Yeah, no, they shouldn't be in there.
With the, oh, no, we're in the next one, sorry, go ahead.
All right, if that's all on, do you have anything?
Hey, well. Unless it's somewhere else that I missed about the notice given.
Where are we?
Uh, well, I'm still in 203.1, but I don't know if it's covered anywhere else about notice being given, the three-day notice.
It's in open and closed meetings.
It is, is it, okay.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Then if there's nothing else on that, we'll move on to point two. The order of the regular school board meeting, any, this is.
I just read them so many times.
Director Johnson on 203.2, looks like you just crossed out.
The default and put in a wrong.
Yes, 203.2 should be, and Martha, please correct me if I'm wrong, on any of this, this should be our new meeting order that we have that was recently redone. And other than that, there should not, let me just double tap that. Oh, yes. And then on the, the back, letter B, multiple comments from, from board directors. Letter B did not make any sense to anyone. So everyone kind of said like this should be struck, which is why it was.
The, the language, the following agenda order similar to, basically, the chair at the time can change these, like you did, Chair White, because of the language here. So we don't want to get too picky about that. So like if you wanted to put administrative and board reports up at front, you are more than welcome to do that. Because all, the only thing that, that language really states is that these particular areas be included.
Covered.
Yeah, be covered regardless of the order you want to put them in.
Okay. That's still similar.
Yes.
And the program presentations is actually Laker showcase.
Say it again?
But does, does the language cover everything in that Laker pride, special recognitions and program presentations? Does that cover everything we normally do?
Instead of program presentations?
What do you think?
Doesn't matter because.
Laker showcase instead of pride.
Yeah, should, no, no, no.
No, instead of program.
Laker showcase instead of program presentations.
Okay.
The last one.
Okay, thank you.
It's getting to the same outcome.
Yes.
Just want to make sure they're not run into a vocabulary.
And Laker showcase.
All right.
So special recognition stays the same.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, is there part for new business? Did we miss that? Because there's unfinished business, policy administrat- there's new business.
Oh, there's no new business.
Always have new business, folks.
That is true. Is it on the old one?
This is for the regular meeting though. The new business comes under the study sessions.
No, 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 new business comes under the.
Oh, is there?
We've never.
Oh, yeah, 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 you're right.
We rarely have anything in unfinished.
That's because it wasn't on the other one.
We almost always have something in new business.
The national secretary, I know we always have new business. It's part of, it's part of Robert's Rules of Order.
Add a new.
Unfinished business, new business?
It would be technically after the approval of the agenda in between nine and 10.
And you know that if it's.
No, because it's approval agenda, consent.
But that's what it was tonight, so I'm just.
Business looking after unfinished business.
Yes, new business comes after unfinished business.
Yeah.
Great.
This was the one.
Can number it 13 and a half if you wanted.
No, okay, we'll.
You'll know what it is.
And here's the thing, I, I personally, this is for Chair White. We, we kind of stated earlier, but not really, I know it's under your thing, but the, the following agenda, what we don't state in here is the fact that you have the ability to determine the agenda. I know we stated with the chair, vice chair and superintendent. But I mean, if, if, if someone were to challenge this and say, well, the board didn't agree to it and all that kind of stuff, did you want to restate it or at least have a recursive reference to the policy that states the role of the chair in here?
I guess, I, I, I'd have to, I'd have to consider that. On the top of my head, I can't give you an answer.
The role of the chair is, is specifically stated in statute and Robert's Rules of Order. So if we follow Robert's Rules of Order and we follow Minnesota statute, it's already defined.
So, yeah, but there's a lot of things we do that aren't in Robert's Rules of Order.
So what you're saying is.
I just went saying that, I, I just, you know, based upon history, I.
Do you want to codify my ability to?
Oh, we already talked about that in the other previous 200s that we went through about the role of the chair and officers' roles and that kind of thing.
Reference to the policy underneath here, yeah, cross-reference the policy, yeah. Okay, because you do cross-reference it.
It's in the operational procedure that the board.
What policy is that?
Sorry.
We did.
No, we set our own operation procedures.
So is that when we are approved?
That's what I'm saying, is the board doesn't create the agenda. The chair, vice chair and superintendent do what the chair having the final say.
That is number.
I think it's in another policy.
Um, 202.
202, okay.
Add cross-reference to policy 202.
Perfect.
Okay.
Board, and I'll just make a note for myself for chair responsibility or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's school board officers and memberships, what their responsibilities are, 202.
Perfect. If there's nothing else on point two, we can move to point three. This is, Charles, anything?
Yeah.
Give me one second.
No problem.
When were you going to?
203.3, study session.
3.3, okay, study session. So MSBA doesn't have a study session. So this is created based off of the previous one that we just went through. Chair White and I had a discussion on this. There was a couple of things. And then, yes, but we're open to, I think the only thing we really wanted to do was delete numbers, delete letter C down at the bottom.
Yes.
That was seemed to be a point of contention with a few board members. And then everything else was, was pretty copacetic with everyone.
I think we should specifically state that we don't follow Robert's rules for small business in here.
And I think, did we cover that by, by inserting the word regular board meeting in the other policies?
Yes, I think we did.
I believe that.
Yes.
You know what I'm saying?
No, I'm fine with that. I just didn't know if you wanted, because the school board shall conduct an orderly school board meeting. It just, I don't, I would hate for someone to come back and say, well, you didn't actually state it and therefore we're not, you know, whatever. And then my only other suggestion is, is when I first, I'm not sure if you remember this, Dan, but they used to do the pledge of allegiance at every, the beginning of every meeting.
All that sort of thing.
And it, it, it added a formality to it, you know, and kind of started the bookend process of the meeting.
And I was talking to Charles about this today and I, I, I can go either way. I, I put it this way, study sessions are supposed to be a little less formal. And, you know, we don't do the national anthem before practice, we do it for the games. And I think, I think having the, I think the, a regular meeting is more worthy of the pledge than a, than a study session. That's my personal opinion, so.
I agree. I just, I just remember when we did the, and I, I do, I love the analogy. I think that's very appropriate. It was just, I just remember when we all stood up and did it. It kind of, you know, we don't actually have the gavel, the whole bit, so that was it. But I'm, I could go either way. I don't care. I'm not going to fight for that one.
Okay, so on 203.3, slashing C.
Scratching C.
And anything else?
Yes.
Yes.
So on B, so we can always have a record, this was the, this is a study session. And it doesn't have to be at the beginning of the study session. It has, we have to put a time that, like, let's say seven o'clock, it would be business and we can't.
Right.
We can go anytime after seven. So what we can do is we can put it anywhere in the agenda wherever we feel it fits. So once it was at the beginning of the meeting, that's cleaner.
Right.
But if you want to do a study session and then have the business afterwards, that's fine, but we have to list a time on there.
And then we'd have to wait.
I think that was in the original norms too, but yeah, okay.
So how, how.
How would you?
How are we to, what would be a?
I think it just should start at designated time.
Didn't we have language before? There's language in there before that stated that, I thought. Didn't we?
Must be open and closed.
But we never had this.
Should start.
Yeah, we've, I think you would have to legally do that, yes, so.
But how about, how about if we?
How do we say?
How if we cross out, start before the beginning of the study sessions to start at a designated time? Because then it could be before or after.
And close separately and should start at a designated time?
Yes. Is that cool?
Yep.
Martha, we've always had our designated time when we do the study session before a board meeting at like at 7:00 PM. But wasn't that tied to the requirement for public notice?
Let's say the business proportion, seven, let's say seven thirty, that's fine.
This is good.
No, I, I get it, but I thought it was tied to requirement for public notice. So people know that after a certain time, it's going to happen regardless of that time or others, yeah. And I, I don't think it's a huge thing, but I don't want to say anything in there that's going to contradict the, this, the statutory requirement for public notice. That's my concern, like the language that we use.
But you're talking about stuff like truth and taxation, you have to say it, you have to allow public to speak at six o'clock or something like that? Is that what you're talking about?
No, no, I'm talking about the fact that when we have a board meeting, we've got to notice it so many days in advance and a time. And that's where that time came from. So when you have a study session with a board meeting or a board meeting or a study session, you've got to provide so many, so much notice and you've got to give it a time.
Right.
That's all. And I, and I know that's somewhere in statute, but I don't, I, I just, and I'm sure what we put in here would be fine. But I just don't want to do anything that could potentially contradict it. That's the only thing.
I think you're, you're referencing open and closed meeting law?
No, 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 I'm referencing the requirement to provide notice that we're going to have a meeting regardless of whether it's open or closed. And there's language in there that, the same language we were just referring to. That said, we have to have at least a three-day notice of that. So that's, so if we.
So then why don't, why don't we just?
That's in our meeting law.
So why don't we leave it at, at a designated time and you can just double check? Double check and make sure that.
I'll double tap it, yeah.
Just the statute.
Sure.
Okay. 203.4, organizational meeting.
Yes. So same thing, no MSBA on this one.
Right.
So it was built off of the regular meeting. And this comes directly from our January 2025 organizational meeting. Copy and pasted exactly how it is. Martha, please correct me if I'm wrong on any of that, but it should be exactly verbatim, everything in order.
Yeah, that we wouldn't do a ceremonial oath of office.
But when necessary or when?
Yeah.
Martha, is there any? There has been kind of changes to what we add on here and what we individually vote on. Is there any way that we can put some looser language other than similar to, or something that would say that, you know, let's say, because we, we talk of the consent agenda, a lot of those aren't voted as one. We do vote like on individual items and take them out. Like legal audit, stuff like that, that we individually vote on. It's not the typical consent agenda that's routine for all of them or voted as one. So I'm wondering, I don't want to be really specific here to allow for the flexibility, but is there anything we can do with the following orders as similar to, or like any language we can put in there that could loosen this up? So we're not, if anything comes up in the organizational meeting that we have to approve for the following year, statutory changes, individual stuff, that's not part of the consent agenda?
I mean.
Needed, maybe just put something like that in there.
Where, okay, where's, where's that?
That would be under 3A, organizational meeting 3A, instead of order similar to, or similar to an as needed or designated by the chair.
Follow an agenda order similar to.
Or as needed per the chair or per administration. Because it's really administration that does the organizational meeting, it's not the chair.
Does similar to doesn't cover it?
I think a similar to covers it. Because you're really just talking about the order. You're not talking about the content. Because you could put five different things in the consent agenda.
So an agenda order is different than adding new agenda items and I don't want to get stuck.
Anybody can add agenda items at any time.
Or as needed.
Needed by, or as designated by administration. Because like, I don't determine, you didn't determine, yeah, that's.
It's not going to structurally change anything. If it adds a little comfort for the board, that's fine.
What's the, what's the language on that?
Got it.
She got it.
It is similar to or as needed by, or as needed by administration, correct?
Yes.
Somewhere I wrote designated, but I don't know. Or is designated, it doesn't matter.
My only concern with the administration is that these are our board meetings. So I would, I, I think it really should be the chair because the chair is the one who develops the agenda.
Well, the problem is.
And we've already written that in the policies back there. We've already, that's already been written in our 20 whatever policies. So we want to make sure we're consistent.
With the chair in conjunction.
With, in collaboration with the superintendent.
Dan, you are brand new. Most, a lot of times the organizational meeting is set by administration of what we need to approve for the administration to be able to do their business.
The previous school board chair.
Yes. The previous school board chair, if they don't run again, is not there or if they're not the chair, so that's why.
Then it goes to the vice chair.
The, the truth of the matter is, is that Martha sets what's, what's going to be on this agenda.
I wonder if this is a little bit of an outlier because this, this is going to be the organizational meeting order.
Correct.
Right.
Going forward forever, probably.
Yeah.
Uh, so I don't know if we need to, I understand what you're saying, saying, Mary, but.
So I think similar to covers. I just feel like orders similar to covers. Any, any variance that may come up.
I agree.
Is that okay?
Yep, I agree.
I'm, I'm fine with it. 203.5. Reminding of our goal of 10 o'clock for those who have a meeting in the morning. See if we can.
We're getting close.
We're getting close. School board meeting agenda, Charles, if you have anything to really.
Yes, can I, can I ask, can we skip to 203.6 and then go back to 203.5?
Yeah.
Because I think 203.5 might be the. Because I think two oh three point five might be the-
The sticking points?
The sticking point?
Fresher brains for that?
Uh, two oh three point six is our consent agenda items from the organizational meeting, again, from January and our regular meetings. And I think between Director Bullion, myself, and Martha, we will make sure that everything is just double and triple tapped on, on that to make sure that we have everything in there. I think we've done a fairly good job of that, just to make sure, but, uh,
So, I made a few comments on this one that I, that were sent out. One, um, the, the consent agenda items, the definition is actually in our current board book, that they're routine in nature, blah, 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 blah.
Yep.
The words non-controversial or similar, um, I don't, you know, again, I made a comment in there about the number of times things are pulled off and, and, how some of that doesn't really fit with the consent agenda itself. But I do believe the language that we use in our board book and have always used, and it's the same language used by usually city councils, county commissions, et cetera, covers that B portion much better than the fairly legacy language out of the, um, MSBA template, which is pretty old. So, if really consent agenda items should be routine in nature. And we've had contracts that are recurring every year that show up in consent agendas, we've had other things. Some things that I've actually questioned whether they belong or not, cause they're, they don't seem routine, and I've been pointed to years and years and years of how they have been routine, so I just wanna make sure that we're leaving this as the routine in nature definition and not trying to be as discreet here as, as some of the language and using terms that are not necessarily, going along with how we've been doing this, with, you know, saying, actually defining them as non-controversial.
I actually like the word non-controversial, because there has been things that have been put in the, uh, consent agenda that are considered controversial, and they're put in there for a reason, to avoid the conversation, so I personally like-
Subscribing motive.
I don't wanna go there, I don't wanna go there, but-
We brought it up!
That's why I don't want them in here, that's why I don't want that language in here.
Controversial is really important here, cause that's the whole and point of the cons, the consent agenda, is you, you're not really supposed to put things in there that are, um, controversial. Like, they're, they're, you're supposed, they're supposed to be transparent, it's supposed to be very routine in nature, non-controversial. And I don't wanna give examples, but there's, you know, we get, we've been criticized for, oh, they threw it in the consent agenda just because they wanted to pass it and not talk about it. That's the whole point of the consent agenda, is to make it very routine in nature, and the items should be non-controversial. I really, actually really appreciate- Non-controversial.
I mean, what is the definition of non-controversial?
Right, that's-
And going back to the definitions of how people act in school and school offices.
Policy that was put in the consent agenda, I mean, there's one of them, I mean-
I'm seriously asking, going back to the meeting that you guys had, and you're talking about the policy that was talking about code, uh, conduct in the school, and you struck all this language of what yelling or being mean or whatever. I'm, I'm literally asking, how will that be universally defined of what is controversial versus non-controversial? Because what one thinks is, the other might think it's not, so I think it's a fair standard that you guys might wanna uphold to not, if you did it in one policy, how are you gonna do it in this policy?
Appreciate your perspective, Dr. Thomas. Um, I think that's, it goes back to that routine in nature and non-controversial. I think that those two words hand in hand, um, define that.
They're not even close.
I think in order, in order to do that, right, we would have to take out the or, it would have to be non-controversial and routine in nature. Because that would then, if, if I'm hearing, because the routine word isn't in there, which, which Director Franz mentioned, and I agree with you, Dr. Thomas, right? And I think to take, right, to hit that, those words, it should, it should read non-controversial and routine in nature.
Non-controversial is an extremely subjective term.
Very subjective.
And it is not appropriate for here. I'm just gonna state that right off the bat.
I, I don't know about saying it's not, uh, cause it came from MSBA, right?
And it's written in other people who have this policy, it's exactly how it's written.
This has come-
And there's a reason why it's in there.
This comes from MSBA policy, model policy, yes, it's a, I think avoiding the and/or is always a good thing.
Right.
Non-controversial though, I mean, it is a subjective, it is, it is subjective, I mean, and to, we don't need to belabor that, but it, it truly is subjective. And so, is there language, another word or language that would be sufficient? Because non, I mean, I understand what you're saying, and I don't disagree with the items are to be non-controversial, but that word in and of itself is subjective. Because, just like whoever says, what one might consider controversial, another might not.
And there's, but the whole language in here, this is extremely legacy language from decades old, and it has other language in here that do not require further discussion or explanation, which means that if they don't, you're not taking stuff off the consent agenda, so-
In our policy was a-
Book, when we go through, in our board thing, when we go through the definition of the consent agenda that repeat every time above the consent agenda.
That language, is every, I mean, do people have problems, is there problems with that language that we've been using?
As far as like what they read, what they think?
Yeah, I think if we look at what we had.
What we had?
What we've, what we've had, but I-
It's on the agenda, we can just go look at it. Yeah, it's May fifth consent agenda, and then read what it says. Items in the, are considered to be routine in nature and would be enacted with one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of items. These items unless a board member of sources and so requests, in which event the item will be removed, it's consent agenda and addressed. The removal of an item for discussion must be requested prior to the approval of the consent agenda. So, I, I'm fine leaving routine in nature, I, I just appreciated the non-controversial, because it's, like I said, it's, it, it, to me, it is exactly what they should be, very routine in nature, so if we wanna use routine in nature, that's fine.
Are you fine with, we, are we, are you fine with taking what we have written here and putting it on B?
I think so.
Yeah, what she just read, I have no problem with.
Yeah, and does anybody have a problem with what we've been using?
Yeah, that's fine, it's exactly, says the exact same thing.
Okay.
I don't like-
Last question, so I, so I think that makes sense, uh, in, uh, under the regular meeting, two D, PMA Financial, so I, I'm just curious that we have a company specifically named in policy, so I would advise the board-
Where are we?
I'm sorry, my, I'm, I'm, maybe I'm behind two oh three point six.
No, you, you're right, it does say PMA.
Under the purple lettering two, called regular meeting.
Right.
And then take a look at two D.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I, I, I think that's a carryout, I don't think we should list a specific-
Good touch.
Just financials.
Yeah.
And, and the financials, you know, yeah.
What should it say?
It's already, we've got financials, I would just strike it, I would just strike it.
Thank you.
Strike D.
There is a financial report that's called the PMA Financial.
Right, but that's, but if they changed the name or do whatever, it's a financial report for investments, that's-
But, yeah, we should, let's, uh, let's make sure we understand, cause there, yes, let, let me talk with Tammy, um, tomorrow and ask what that report would be called in the business sense.
Or something?
Yeah, and that's, it's, it's capturing that, like a portfolio investment report.
Can we just say investment report?
We just need to, no, we just need to make it generic.
Financial is where it does-
Yeah, I know, I'm saying, can we just call it an investment report?
It's not necessarily an investment report all the time, too.
So then you'll get back to-
Just ask Tammy the generic way of-
Investment report?
A generic term for that, for that two D, okay?
Strike O, the reassignment, that was just a one on.
Right.
Strike O.
Yeah, and if we go, if we ever have a building bond referendum, the regular meeting and the finances also increase to show the, the balance of the bond investment and god knows what else, so getting some more generic language in there that says the same thing would probably be best.
For D?
For the, uh, in general, for the detail that's in here. Try to figure out how to make it so that encompasses the spirit of what's supposed to be in there and not necessarily the line items of just what we've been doing for the point in time.
Are you suggesting shortening this to have just a broader? Am I capturing what you're saying?
Well, just, what, what Dr. Thomas suggests is that we talk to Tammy about, uh, about the, what, well, what to call some of these in here.
I was only saying the one, because it can be misconstrued as a singular company.
Right.
Also the others I wasn't weighing in on.
But, um, there's a few things in here that would change, like, say, if we did pass a referendum, there would be three or four more things in there, and, you know, so is there a way that we can put language in here that's gonna encompass enough of what is actually in here without having to be detailed and not just-
Well, it does say in under B though, such agenda items might include ministerial tasks such as, but not limited to.
And they should be routine in nature, that's the thing, we go back to that.
So as long as this line, cause we, we, we replaced B here.
Yep.
So it, that, that last sentence might, might cover anything that might need to be added during specific periods of time.
Yeah, that's, I think is a good idea.
Use our description.
I would just ask to add that last line.
And then just add this last sentence.
Yeah.
So that we can, like Director Franz is saying, it allows for different periods of time, like if, like bond issues pass. It's, the, the big, the important one is but not limited to.
So, keeping this-
Yep.
Last sentence.
Allows us to-
Add some things.
Add things to the agenda that might be temporary in nature.
Yep.
Thank you.
That are routine.
That are still routine during that temporary time.
And we like that language, such agenda items might include ministerial tasks such as, but not limited to.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, two oh three point five.
We're backing up.
It is ten oh five, I suggested us trying to wrap up by ten and continuing this at the May session.
So, do we feel like two oh three point five is a lot of, a lot of discussion points? Or could we finish two oh three?
It's actually a short policy.
I wanna be respectful of those that have an early meeting in the morning and I-
Mostly, I think it's a good stopping point, actually.
If, if we feel like the next, you know, cause these are gonna get approved, it's still in time for our deadline, um-
So we're just gonna push these to the next study session?
That is my suggestion based on, cause then, then let's do another one, let's do another.
No, no, I understand, I understand, and-
So is that, if that's okay with everybody, I don't think that we're, we're in a super time crunch, as long as we're still on schedule? Understand that this might affect the next study session in May, um, by adding a couple to it. Um, I just, it's, if we're good, let's get out of here.
There's just two, right?
Um, except for we do have to go through the rest of the agenda, there's a few more things on the bottom, please.
There is, you are correct. All right, so we'll move on to the, uh, oh, and then before I, before we move on, uh, the, the school board vacancies that were suggested in here, and appreciate Director Franz getting the, the quick response, those are actually going to be discussed, or meant to be discussed on May twenty eighth, so you have the full month to kinda peruse them and-
And send our feedback, if we have recommendations, okay.
In advance of that, so you have plenty of time on the two oh one point one, if you want to. And then, uh, future agenda topics.
Administrative reports.
Did I miss something?
Yes. Sixteen administrative reports. Oh, oh, I'm in the wrong, oh, oh, sorry, I'm in the wrong meeting, I'm, I'm already in May.
One report a night.
I'm already in May, sorry, sorry. My sincere apologies for that, I was in the wrong meeting. Policies in May then, that's so weird, okay.
Anything on anybody's mind?
Oh, we're approving in May, that's why. I'm, yes, I have some things, so, but every, let, everybody else can go first, I don't wanna go first.
It came to mind when we were talking about open enrollment, I would love, um, some information on open enrollment and just further discussion on, um, and maybe this goes with some of the budget discussion, and potential school closures, but I think some discussion around-
So, exactly?
Policy on if we need to adjust that going forward with school closures, things like that.
So are you looking for like numbers in and out, or, uh, cause I think the state statute pretty much covers-
How many we're letting in, and if there's criteria, um, I think-
Each year the board, um, takes a vote on whether or not you're going to cap open enrollment. Believe that every year that they do that, right? So I think we can tie that as part of the- Yeah, it, the timing would align just fine, because our recommendation won't have to go until October of what we're gonna do. So we'll, we'll, I mean, we've done open enrollment reports as part of enrollment in the past, and so-
Usually break it out.
Yeah, so we can add, add our next enrollment update, easily share kinda what we are tracking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that would be helpful as we discuss buildings.
So that, okay, so that will be just another agenda item tied to a existing report?
Existing enrollment report.
Yeah.
So then I won't necessarily have to make that separate.
Yeah, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, Director Fredrickson already wrote that down, uh, when you suggested it earlier.
I just didn't know if we needed like a discussion topic around it further to that.
Part of the ongoing report then, moving forward, at least for the, whenever you can cobble it together, I don't think there's huge worry. Anyone else?
I have, I've, it's been a lot of, um, traffic recently and a lot of accidents, um, around the high school, around the middle school, so if we can, and this might be something that, that's, that's coming up, school safety, outdoor safety, maybe even, I understand it might stretch into like the city, those types of things. But there's a, there's a lot of discussion and, and noise around town, and if there's anything that we can maybe do with that. Um, and even bringing in city officials to address those things. When is our- Normally, those things, I feel, come back to us anyways, because they are entering and exiting the schools.
So what exactly, I know in the past we've had joint meetings, uh, around that, I don't know if, if, uh-
Well, we have issues with people complaining about the congestion, people not following the rules in the parking lot, and then you've got the issues of coming and going from our parking lots, right?
Coming and going, definitely, um, not so much parking lot, there's, but there's been more than a few accidents towards the high school lately, um, a few things around the middle schools.
Well, and I think I, I would just like to add to this, um, I mean, I saw one of those accidents, but I think the conversation has been, was there a conversation had when we added the upper, new ad, new upper level entrance?
How would impact traffic?
How does that impact the traffic flows up there? I don't know if there ever was, because that, that, if you try to drop your kid off in the morning, it's a little frightening.
Manifest, would it, uh, like this, something that we can get some consensus, would it be a, I don't know, a, a report from high school admin on, on what their protocols are?
Or even how many accidents there's been reported in the last year, we could get maybe something from the city to say how many accidents have been reported at that one intersection? I mean, that would be good to know, too, the school probably knows, they probably get notice of it as well.
But then, but then, then some, the, the public would need to go to the city and say, this isn't gonna cut it, you need to do something, I, I think that has already begun to take place.
I, I think, I think so too, and I feel like this is just something, because, right, public safety, I know, I know we're gonna have a talk about, about that soon, I don't know if this is something that we could co-locate the two with one another, um, or if that's even too soon to say, like, that's a lot of information to, to go to, and this is very broad.
So I, I just don't know how we-
Or do we need to add a crossing guard, or, I mean, that's the thing as far as resources goes, you know what I mean?
Yeah, before you jump to solutions, we need to figure out, do we have a-
What's the, what's the, what's the ask?
Cause I don't, I wanna make sure we're not, because it'd be real, really easy to get into savage's lane here. In our discussion, and I know you're not, but sure that, it's so easy to get, we are-
Do we have a representative going to the city right now and dealing with this, or is it even in our purview?
I mean, both, both Dan and Haley work with our SROs and, um, dealing with any accidents and things of that nature, but it's, it's, well, from my opinion, it's bigger than just accidents, because uh, the congestion piece that you're talking about, people waiting, uh, you know, I know my sister-in-law hears about it, cause she lives two blocks away from the high school, and they're all parked down on the cul-de-sac, waiting for kids to get out, you know, so, and they, they've explored conversations with the city, um, and the city may or may not add signs to say no parking during X amount of hours, you know, similar to what we have at Laola on the hill.
Yeah.
But then that's a city issue, not our issue.
Do we still have an issue with Hamilton Ridge and the congestion coming in and out of that subdivision?
I haven't heard anything, you know, on my radar.
I was over there recently, and it was, it seemed very well controlled.
The school though, like, like you said, crossing guards, or, like, is that, or maybe that's what the que, the ask is, like, are there options?
Maybe, how about, how about, how about this, how about, how about an update? I mean, I'm sure high school administration is very aware of what's going on up there, would, would, would an update from high school admin at some point?
About traffic flow?
About, just, just, yeah, just how- About, just, yeah, just how they, what their, what their plans are, how they handle it, what, what they've been, what they've been noticing?
Can we add, can we, I know the high school is probably the primary concern. I just, I deal with middle school daily basis, right? It's not any funner than that, and there's quite a few.
It's also ten times better than it used to be, trust me.
It absolutely is, I completely agree.
And it's still not great, and, yeah.
Maybe even just having the SROs come in with them, and seeing what they're, what they're encountering with, with the middle schoolers on, on the e-bikes, and that e-bike's been a.
So what if we just have Dan do an update?
Yeah, maybe a public safety.
And I would assume that Dan does, will know what to do, or he's going to advise you and Dr. Thomas on the timing for this, particularly, you don't want to preempt. Any discussions with either city, Prior Lake, or Savage.
Yeah, we'll start there.
Maybe, maybe that's, maybe that's the way to go.
I'll start there.
Involve as few people as possible.
Is the will of the board, or is the consensus to come back with a secondary update on.
Traffic safety?
Traffic safety in students?
My question.
I think that would be great.
My question to you, Dr. Johnson, is, like, I completely understand wanting to know more. My question is, is this, in this stage, is this a good agenda item? Does that make sense? That's why Dan needs to, Dan and Dr. Thomas need to talk about the stage that it's actually in.
Well, I agree.
Because I completely agree and understand wanting to know more and all of that, but is it, are we. We, what's the word I'm looking for? Is this too, is this premature to have it be an agenda item?
To answer your question, my reasoning of now is, we're, we're getting ready to move into summertime, and we can start with the conversation like Dr. Thomas just said. And if we can move into something, we can start having the conversation with the city, with the cities, excuse me. And then, maybe we can come to a resolution before school begins in the fall, that would be.
And just to be clear, it wouldn't be the board having the discussion with the city, it would be Dan Powers who's.
Presenting himself.
And that's probably already underway, so we, so the timing of it needs to be considered.
And that would be, and that would be great to know, yeah.
That's more my question.
I'll get with you on that for timing.
Is it a board agenda item, or is it just work we'd like to see done by, that's, I guess that's my question.
And I think the update that Dr. Thomas suggested is.
It would be more of an update, because our power is pretty limited here, because the city was, is the final arbiter of what they do anyway.
Okay. Okay, I have two things on my list, one, we've already talked about, but I wanted to get more definition around it and when it's going to happen. And it's the discussion of the reworking of the A and I funds, and my, it comes out of, one, the timing of the strategic plan, so aligning the funds to the strategic plan. It also, I think, expediates, expediates the reason for bringing this to the board, based on what we heard from the AIPAC committee and their focus on closing achievement gaps. And then, thirdly, I'd like to have the conversation sooner than June, so that we could, if we do need to readjust funds to align with those three things. It could be done before we approve this budget for the next year, so.
My understanding, I don't want to speak on your behalf, I, I mean, the budget for this A and I plan has been, has already been approved.
We have, we have the right and the authority to revise the plan, especially this last third year, at any time. And, but it's, the, you know, we, obviously, we'd want administration to bring back their ideas of what they're recommending, based on the things that we've heard. And then it would come back to the, you know, we'd get a presentation, these are the recommendations, and then we, as the board, can discuss it and make suggestions, whatever it might be. And then, Dr. Thomas, my understanding is you take it back to MDE and make sure it aligns with our statutory requirements, is what I, I understand. For that third year.
Well, I mean, the plan, the plan and the budget have been approved by this board.
Right, but the plan can be revised.
And, and the, I'll go, I'll go back to Director or Vice Chair Bulling's point. With all the pressing things that were, are on our plate right now. With the, the thing for me is reworking currently some admin salary resources. I can do that without doing anything to the plan, I can realign, it's similar to our district budget, we have a district budget, and based upon ebbs and flows and needs. We make adjustments all throughout the year to, to address that. I don't, I don't need to rewrite a plan and, and do a comprehensive rewrite, and I, I won't have time to bring it through T and L, because if I'm going to do this. As I take the more direct oversight of that work, it's going to go through T and L, it's going to go through Finance Committee, it's going to go through channels. I can't get that done this year. It's, it's, I, I won't have the time, our meetings, our committees are done in May.
Well, I will say, I'm disappointed to hear that, because we talked about this back in February, so, and that was the will of the board to move forward with this.
The will of the board was never to rewrite, I've never heard the will of the board to rewrite an entire A and I plan and a whole new A and I budget, that was never.
To realign the plan, to realign the funds to our strategic plan, that was what we talked about in February, so I.
Realigning the, the funds, Director Atkinson, can be done, absolutely can be done. And aligning it to academic excellence as part of our strategic plan, and putting those dollars closer to our students, absolutely can be done. So, so that, that's, that's my, that is my plan. Correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, I, I just don't recall the will of the board saying.
I don't either.
It's on the, it's on the minutes, so you can, you can all go back and write, you can all go back and watch the, the meeting, so. Where we had a, we talked about, I brought it up, and then we said, okay, let's go ahead and, we go ahead and talk about that.
So.
It was a future agenda item topic, it's in, it's in the minutes.
Which, which meeting?
It's February, I'd have to go.
Study session?
February study session, yeah.
It's the twenty eighth, I think that was.
And that's why I've been asking, Dr. Thomas, you and I have talked about this multiple times, so.
I've talked about this, about realigning the resources.
I've sent you examples, so, for example, Forest Lake.
I have that district example of what they've done.
Forest Lake is in the exact same timing as we are, and I can send, I will send all of you board members, FYI, do not respond, a copy of this plan, because I think it's really important to see it. And based on the feedback from AIPAC and their comments about closing this achievement gap, I think we really need to re-look at our plan and really focus in on this academics and closing the achievement gap. And the way that Forest Lake writes their plan, it's very specifically focused on that. And so, that was my ask, and that was, like I said, I thought the will of the board since February, and I've been patiently waiting for that. So I don't know how we move forward with that.
So I don't remember it either, nor, you know, in all of our A and I budget has been within statutory requirements. So reworking it and all that kind of stuff, I don't believe was ever brought up. If it was, it was probably by you, but I don't remember us ever going through and getting a will of the board to redo the A and I funding.
It's in the minutes, Chair France, I mean, Director France, it's in the minutes.
But we did approve the budget and the reallocation based upon salaries doesn't really, I mean.
I do, I do support, and I thought we were going to look at the funding also for A and I planning, and, and I agree it also, you know, with the change and the director role and. Shifting those funds and AIPAC and focusing on academic achievement gap.
Well, here, here.
Thought that was the intent, but.
I think we need to be cognizant of the, of the fact that.
Right.
I think Dr. Thomas has taken a gigantic step in reallocating a big chunk of that by eliminating a position specifically to target it more toward kids. Where that gets targeted is the how, in my, my opinion. And we haven't even had a chance to sit down with AIPAC yet, since, since that last meeting, and even cobbled together a response letter that we're required to do with in that sixty day limit.
In February, we didn't know where we were.
I don't know.
Position anyways.
I, I don't know what, where we'd target it until we even had a chance to get together with these folks, figure out what we're not doing in their eyes, I, I don't know.
And, yeah, like, the Lake Forest plan's very specific, like, increase Native American, you know, math achievement by ten points, and, I mean, it's very specific, and so.
We have those goal metrics in our, in our.
Well, we don't, they're very generic, they're very, I mean, they're very high level, so.
We have very specific cultural groups as well.
We do, but there, there's one based on attendance, I think, I'm talking focusing those schools on.
AP courses and others.
Really honing in and focus on academic achievement, based on our strategic plan. I guess I'd have a really hard time understanding why we wouldn't re-aloc, or re-look at those funds, we have a new strategic plan. And this plan, this plan was written two years ago, and so why wouldn't we realign it, it makes no sense to me.
Well, I, I, I think we are.
I guess maybe I'm just asking to have the update come to the board, if, if Dr. Thomas is working on it, then let's have it come to the board, so we can take a look at it.
I don't want to, I don't want to allocate specific time on this, it's going to be part of the overall budget, it's already being done. Our plan is statutorily compliant, and there's, we got to quit cherry picking one out of three hundred and eighty or seventy school districts to say, oh, do this for this one and do that for that one. We have our plan, it's been approved, we're going to.
It's not working though, that's the problem, it's not working.
Well, hold on, hold on, that is a subjective statement.
We are not closing that achievement gap, Director, Director France, in all fairness, we heard it from their community, so.
We've heard a lot of things from that, we have not developed a response to that, and by the way, it's, there's a lot behind that, so I would prefer if we. Look at it holistically as we go into the next budget year and not cherry pick stuff out right now.
And my, my point is just, I wouldn't know what to recommend until I, I mean, who knows if one, how many meetings it's going to take to come some kind of a. Maybe a new working relationship with this group, I don't know, maybe it's one, maybe it's four.
Well, the reworking of the plan can come after that meeting, I think that that's a really great directive, to be honest with you.
From my perspective, I mean, the budget doesn't change, right, it's how we're using those funds.
It's how you're using the funding.
And so I think that's the important discussion, and I personally would love to see some discussion around that before the start of the school year, because I would hate to waste another school year for these students, right?
But, this is, that's why I made the decision, and I'm working through how we're going to reallocate some of those funds directly to address some of what we heard from AIPAC. Also what we see in our data, with various student groups and their achievement, and bringing additional supports that will bring that kind of academic. You know, tutoring, support, et cetera, on top of what's happening in the classroom. That is the direction that I'm moving in, that's what you and I have been talking about. And, so again, I, I, I just, right, tonight, I guess I've never heard the will of the board to completely redo the plan, that was my first. So I misunderstood your individual comments for the will of the board, because, like I said, if I'm going to do this, well, when I do this team. It's going to be in a different process than what we've done in the past, to engage different committees and participation in the development of this. And so that we have a targeted focus moving forward, and that's, I'm not wavering from that, so.
Can I just make a comment or just a thought too? I think we all would agree we want to be in compliance with the, for, for AIPAC. We all want the achievement gaps to the community, I mean, we all want that. And there's another part that we don't control, so I think that there is work in motion right now. There are changes being made, there was a position eliminated to, to direct funds, and, and this conversation needs to be an ongoing thing. But the, the thing that isn't discussed or hasn't been really said is, the, the achievement, it includes the students too. And it includes that communities, I mean, we can do all of the things, and, you know, we, we heard from, like, some of them are, they just are. They're just going to vote non-compliant, and, and I, and we have to, we have to work on that relationship, we have to build the relationship, we have to put the things in place. I feel like we're, we're, we are doing work, we are, we haven't arrived, we definitely have places for improvement, and we cannot force achievement.
We can allocate, so instead of allocating resources for paintings, we can allocate resource for tutors, that is my point.
I think we're getting too close into this conversation.
I do think, I think we're getting too far in the weeds, and I agree with you, and I think, all I want to know is, like, could we get the will of the board? To have Dr. Thomas start that process of reworking that last year of the plan, and start, like you said, if you want to go through the process of taking it through T and L and taking it through Finance, I fully support that, I think that's great. But can we get the will of the board that that, that's where you want to start the process?
The process, what he's been trying to say is the process is already underway, and it has been underway, and that's the house, so.
That's not what I heard.
So, and I, I for one, do not want this as a separate agenda item before the budgets, the final budget in June hopefully is passed. Because I don't believe it's, I think it's part of the whole, I don't believe it's a separate item, I think it's going to detract from the whole. Budgeting and, and preparation as we go into not only more budget cuts, but also the allocation of the funds to support the overall strategic plan, because it's already happening. So I, I didn't hear the will of the board the first time, I didn't even hear, I don't remember any of this conversation of reworking A and I.
It wasn't this detailed, it was, but please go look on the agenda.
If, if, well, I'm not going to speculate, but, I mean, we would have, I would have agreed, the board would have agreed to a discussion, we wouldn't have agreed to a rewriting of the plan.
It was a discussion.
Right, and so, I'd have a hard time committing Michael to rewriting a plan, when my guess is he's already starting on the rewriting of the next three years.
No, that, that doesn't, we, we do that as a board.
Well.
When that comes up, but we have the authority to rewrite this last year as well.
You're right, we do.
Actually, we delegate that too.
And, and, I, I'd have a hard time going down that road. When it's, when Michael's already indicated that that process has already begun for the next three years, in a completely different direction. I believe that the structural changes to next year's allocation is, is potentially a gigantic change. In, in the, in the potential success of our plan, that's my personal opinion, and.
Can we see that though?
Yeah, I mean, it's good to believe, and it's good to think and wish and dream, but can we have some content behind that, please?
He's, he's, he's planning on, on coming to the board on the June study session.
Yeah, that's when I'll be sharing this information, as to the, the direction that we're taking as we begin to make these shifts. It, it, that's kind of that big focus of our works, our work session is around academics, and this is, to your part, a lot of the little pieces equating to the whole of what we're attempting to do differently moving forward. This is included in that conversation, so that's, that's my plan. And you all can provide perspective and feedback on that as we move along in that direction. But my, my focus is to bring more direct student support, first and foremost, I mean, we've got to find ways to support kids differently.
Okay. I've just had one other thing, I'm sorry, I'll try to make a brief, but I think it's timely. My understanding is teachers have, they are able to preview the MCA scores, so is it possible that next month we could get just a brief update on how the MCA scores are looking? Because I understand they have moment at time, they can go and, they've seen them, they, they can go in and look at them as far as how they are, how they're looking.
Let me touch base with Dr. Zumbush to ensure that we present something that's fairly clean.
Yeah.
Because there are errors and issues that come up as we start going through and cleaning and scrubbing the data files, so as soon as we can do that, I can let the board know when we could have a preliminary, you know, conversation.
Rather than waiting till October.
Our other last item was just that, an update maybe on summer school programming, Dr. Thomas, and maybe this will be included in your June, but I know we had some discussion around MCA preview.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
I was, brain meltdown.
Update or discussion around summer school programming and offering, and maybe that will be included in June, I'm not sure, but.
It, it wasn't planning, we've never, it's not, but if that's the will of the board.
How would that manifest itself, I mean, we, we have programs planned for the summer.
My understanding is it's just a budget discussion, right, going forward and how we're handling it, and.
For summer school?
Correct.
Do we even know what the teachers are recommending, what the?
Yeah, it's our, it's our, we're running the very similar summer school that we ran for the past several years.
What I meant, what I meant is. We, we offer the same things, but who qualifies, what the special needs are, and the, and the, and the actual enrollment is.
We have targeted criteria that we're utilizing, so, all of that.
The same criteria.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, what I'm, what I'm saying is, is that we don't know, that parents and kids have not been told. And we don't know the numbers and stuff like that, right?
We're, we don't know numbers yet, but, teachers were identifying based upon student performance. Versus like this open call.
Right.
Um, very targeted to get the kids who really need it most, because we have a smaller dollar allotment for this year.
We now only have a smaller dollar, and I understand that we lost transportation also, right, there's no funding for transportation, yeah. Cause so, that's, yeah.
We use.
So that's one of the update I wanted to talk about, and if we, you know, further down the road, do we need to allocate funding for, I don't know, I'm just bringing it up as a topic.
Again, I'm looking for a specific. Administration to be clear on what we're asking. Is this like a, an update on this, once we have some numbers in June, and update on. How the programs are looking, or do you wanna, I, I am still confused as to exactly what you want.
I guess my, I was curious, the changes that we've had to make due to funding, and then that's for the summer. And then also looking down the road, as we start budgeting further down the road, are there further funding allocations? We need to consider for the programming, does that make sense?
Yeah, making sure, making sure it's funded for twenty-five, twenty-six, right, I mean, that's.
Right.
Yeah. Yep.
Is, any other problem with that?
I just, I'm, I'm gonna ask Dr. Thomas to try and, I know that we've talked about this usually. As part of the overall budget, and then usually after the summers ended to talk about.
Yeah, we do an, we do an update as to how the summer programming went, and all that.
Would that be an appropriate window to?
Yeah, I think just at some point, yeah.
And have we done that with Michelle, Angel, Bolt, cause she'll do the E S Y, and you'll do.
So.
So that's already usually done in, okay.
Early school year.
I guess my only ask, would it be consideration for budgeting for twenty-five, twenty-six, do we need to allocate budget?
So I think we'll probably, let me weave some of that inquiry into the June conversation.
Okay.
Um, because that's also where I'm looking to move A and I funding more towards, and how we do that. Cause we started doing that this year with the Break Academies, and we're doing that this summer with some of our A and I funding. To support summer learning as well, which is a little different than what we've ever done, so that's part of that.
So is summer school programming, uh, this, is this summer's program twenty-four, twenty-five? Or is it both, or is it twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-six? Yeah, cause July one happens.
Yeah, this is for twenty-four, twenty-five.
The entire summer?
No, no, it's only for four weeks.
Okay.
So.
But it's out of twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
It's out of twenty-four, twenty-five.
Even though it might happen in, in after July?
So, no, we're, no, our, our summer program is still the same four-week program that we're doing, and it's done.
It's done by July one?
Yeah, and, and so as we move forward.
Okay.
Some of the other A and I rewrite and read, read allocation, I should say, is going towards supporting that programming into the school year.
For the twenty-five, twenty-six.
Twenty-six school year.
All right.
I think it's relevant for the community, cause the, the criteria has changed.
I understand you're clear on.
Twenty-five, twenty-six, not for the twenty-four, twenty-five.
Criteria has changed.
Didn't we already have that?
But he'll touch on it in budget, yeah.
Yeah, you're gonna touch on it already in budget, okay, cause I know we've already discussed it, but I think it was before you got on the board.
There is no other potential future agenda topics, we can adjourn.